I'll call to order the Tuesday, July 26, 2022 Town Council Committee of the Hall to order at 6:35. All councilors are present with the exception of Counselor Parker, who is running just a little bit late. Calendar and Communications, Counselor Casiri.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to take this time to give a little shout out to our local libraries. There has been an endless amount of programs happening this summer that I know my children have been enjoying. We attended Officer Chase's third birthday party at Groton Public Library, and there were bubbles and cupcakes and popcorn. My kids got temporary tattoos, and Officer McClellan handed out stickers and cards to the kids. And one of the members of the staff came over to a group of us and said, and I'm paraphrasing here, but basically said she was just so thankful to see families back at the library. And Director Emili was there handing out cupcakes to the kids and engaging with families. And I had an equally moving conversation with Director Bradley from the Mystic Noink Library, who said they just really knew parents needed a break after COVID. And they have certainly been supplying great programs. We've attended magic shows, theater classes, and presentations from the Nature Center. And I also wanted to give another big shout out to our Parks and Rec Department. I had very nervous kiddos yesterday going to Discovery Camp for the first time, and they came home with big smiles on their faces and a great experience. And this morning, when I dropped them off, they were greeted by staff by their name already. So Groton parents, I am gloating about all these great programs and opportunities because they are amazing and available for our kids. So please check them out and see what's happening this summer. Today, I drove down to Park Place and walked the road and checked out the right-of-way markers, and I'll save my commentary on that for the agenda item. And I received various correspondence about Mystic Parking, short-term rentals, property reuse, Branford Manor, Beebe Cove, Park Place, Life Vests, Board of Ed Schedules, Town Ethics Commission Members, FOIA Complaint, Voting Poll, Location Postcards, the honorary road renaming, and invitations next week for National Night Out, which is August 2nd, from 5:00 to 8:00 at Paquannick Plains Park. And so they fire award ceremony and badge pinning on August 5th at 6:00 PM, right here at Thrive 55 for the Paquannick Bridge Fire Department. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Baumgartner.
Uh, no report.
Thank you, Counsel Westerveld.
Thank you very much. I as well received tons, tons of emails about short-term rentals, as well as Park Place and a number of other things that are, you know, hot topics for us right now. That's it.
Thank you. Counsel Bordelon.
Thank you. I too received numerous emails regarding short-term rentals, Park Place. I did speak with the folks at Nine Park Place in regards to, you know, the email that was sent out. Also been down back to Park Place to check out the lay of the land down there. Short-term rentals, Branford Manor, been getting phone calls and correspondence with residents from there that are still concerned about the health and welfare and well-being of their families and children in and around Branford Manor. Still dealing with folks that are being removed and put into hotels and hoping at some point that it makes back, makes it back around, that we get another update on that. What else do I have? Also, the concerns with Branford was the children that are being displaced, putting in, put into hotels, concerned about transportation once school starts. So that's definitely a large concern. And that's about all I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you. I attended two meetings in the last week. One was the Chair of Chairs, the Committee of Chairs meeting. It was the first time I met in, I think, two years. So it's a good thing to get that going again. Basically, we just, everybody gave a little synopsis of what their group had been up to recently, and I brought to the Chair of Planning and Zoning a concern about meeting times, which he will bring to his group. I also attended a meeting about homeless problem that we have here in Groton, and there's a group of people who are working on a solution to it, and they seem to have made a lot of progress. And we may need to have an ordinance at some point, and that could come to the council at some point in the future. Counsel Franco.
Thank you. It's been a busy week or so, two weeks. I'd like to thank Public Works for fixing a sidewalk issue at the end of my street. There was a sinkhole that created a pretty big safety concern, and they had corrected that. I attended the Future of Retailing Groton presentation that was held at the Annex by Economic Development. A lot of good information that was recorded, and it's been, it's out there if anybody would like to watch it. I walked Park Place as well, and I spoke to a 40-year landscaper to that area. And I've also had other communications regarding Park Place. I also had many communications as Counselor Casiri had stated, as well as some in-person conversations regarding short-term rentals after bumping into people while I was out shopping, and the topic has come up, so it is being discussed in our community. Also, I had the pleasure of dining at the new restaurant in town, the New York Deli and Diner. Spoke to Kate, who is from New York and has only lived here a very short time, and opened up a new diner in our community, and like to welcome her into our community. And it's a very tough time to open a business with the staffing issues that are happening around with everybody, so I wish her well, and I know she's gonna have some challenges there with the staffing. So I wish her well. Thank you.
Counsel Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also received the communications that everyone else has received. Last week, I attended, also attended the Future of Retailing in Groton. I found it very interesting. It was almost like a mini masterclass in how retailing works from the town side. So it was pretty informative and very well put on. I attended the Mystic Parking Study Phase Two meeting, and lots of good information was expressed in that meeting, and people still need, they would still love to have people go to the Greater Groton, if you can read the cameras, thegreatergroton.com and fill out the survey on the parking issues. There's still time to do it, and they're looking for as much input as they can get, so that, I would encourage people to do that. I also drove down Park Place today, this afternoon, and went all the way to the end and back, took a look at that. And a shout out to our Parks and Rec Department for their amazing concerts that they have on Thursday nights at Esca Point. I think it's, it's a real treat and feature that we have in this community, and there's fantastic bands, and I would say, I don't know how many people go to those, but easily, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds, maybe easily, yeah. It's very well-run, very well-organized, there's lots of parking. It's a beautiful way to spend a summer evening, the sun coming down, and the bands playing, against the boats in the water. So I encourage, there's a few more, I don't know how many more concerts we have this summer, but two more, all right? Mr. Berry tells me two more, so I wouldn't do that. As there are some great concerts also in the city on Friday nights, but I think it's a real, it's a real treat that we have these, so that's it. All right? Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel McBride.
Thank you. I received the same correspondence numerous other councilors did. I also received some additional correspondence and spoke to some other residents regarding the increase in property taxes, the Grandmont Point Bridge, the utilization of ARPA funds, as well as what others received. So no other report. Thank you.
Thank you. Onto the Approval Minutes. I make a motion to approve the Committee of the Hall meeting minutes of July 12, 2022. So moved.
Seconded, Jones.
Moved by Melinda, seconded by Jones. Counsel Franco.
I had noticed on our Page 9, which is the vote which happened on the draft ordinance regarding short-term rentals, that they have Counsel Westerveld's vote as a yes, and at that time, he had voted a no. And if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think Robert's Rule states that, and I heard you as the mayor role-call and state who voted which way, that the correction needs to be made at that time, or a reconsideration can be done at that cow, or can be done actually at this cow. So I think it should be presented as what actually happened in our minutes, and then or we could have a reconsiderate, I think it should be corrected to a no, and then if Counsel Westerveld would like to bring it back for reconsideration on the vote, he can do so.
Right, yeah. I had recorded his vote as he no, and read it that way. I was approached at the end of the meeting that I had recorded it incorrectly, and that I asked the meeting minutes taker to correct in the record. But if Counsel Westerveld would like to speak on it.
Yes, as a matter of fact, I did come up and tell you that I was confused by what I had voted. I had lost track of things for a moment, and that I had intended to vote yes on that, and I ask you to change it for that reason. If we need to take it back to a no, there's no reason to waste our time by reconsidering the vote, since it's gonna go that way anyway. Thank you.
Right.
And I apologize to everyone for my mistake.
No problem.
So will the minutes state that it's a no?
I'm comfortable with them being recorded as he wished. I guess that's up to the vote of the council, though, how they want that to go.
I just have concerns that in the future, if somebody changes the way they vote after the meeting and then asks for it to be changed to reflect something that didn't happen at the meeting, that that's an issue, and that's why there is such a thing as reconsideration or correction at the time. That's what concerns me for the future.
I hear you.
But I don't have a problem with a reconsideration and another vote at all.
Okay. Counsel McBride?
Just for clarification, there's four votes. Which one are we referring to on Page 9? I'm not sure which one.
The final.
The final? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the final vote. Okay. So you want that corrected in the minutes?
I would like it corrected.
Okay. So we'll have a vote on the minutes, as amended by Counsel Franco. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Point of information.
Yep.
Does she need a second for the amendment?
Uh, we don't typically do that in this portion of the meeting, so no. Counsel Parker, are you a yes?
Yes.
Okay, and I'll just note that Counsel Parker joined us at 6:45. Opposed? Abstentions? Care is unanimously nine in favor, zero oppose, zero abstaining. Okay, onto new business. Page 12, and I'll invite Community Speaks Out to the table. All right? So there's no motion for this agenda item, but just for background information, we received a grant a few weeks back and awarded the grant to Community Speaks Out, so we invited them here to speak about all the good work that they do. Welcome.
Well, thank you. Thanks for having us. So we'll speak about the grant. First of all, thank, I want to thank the whole entire council for recognizing Community Speaks Out and the work that we've done. I was sitting in the very chair as you are when we started to decide to make this group. My son had become addicted to opiates. The issues become near and dear to our heart. We do think that we are the organization, the go-to organization, not just for Groton, but for all of New England County. And when we started the organization, it was based on the fact that we were gonna try to raise money and help pay for everyone's recovery. That's what our goal was. We are far, far short of that. I think the lawsuit that we won and the money that's been given out is not, nowhere near enough. I think, I think the company, we all, I think, agree with that. But it's gonna be how you effectively spend the money, how you make sure that it gets to the folks that need it. And my wife, day in and day out, has been on the phone for the last six years. I get to hear the conversations, the nightly conversations of people calling and asking for help. My, my part of the organization, I'm, I'm the newly-elected president, since I am gonna be stepping away from politics for a little bit. Tammy has been running it for seven years, and, and has been doing, I mean, we get to see miracles. That's the only way I can say, and I get to hear the, the hope in people's voices when they have nothing left, when, when they've, when there really nobody else to turn to, where their family's not, not helping them anymore. And Tammy actually can be tough and compassionate and all these different things at the same time. But in the end, our mission has become to help people pay for their sober recovery. So when they're going into a sober home and they have no money, we have connections to different sober homes. And I'll let Tammy just describe a couple of the times with people she's helped, but really, a lot of the work we're doing is, is happening to be helping, which we know has been too late sometimes, because it's people once they're addicted. And we are taking a little bit of a shift and working towards people and prevention. We've been in schools. Wheeler comes to mind, but we've been in several schools. We spoke around the state in different schools, and we're using local folks and young kids that have gone through it to try to describe their experience. And I think we've made a huge difference. We do, we think we spent about $36,000 on sober living alone last year. And that all comes through fundraising, through community donations. We've got a, one state grant through the state is child prevention or violence prevention, which all follows in the same lead with the drug. So Tammy?
Okay, so I'll just piggyback. So basically, our mission is obviously to improve our, our community by providing prevention, education, and resources to individuals and their families who need, are struggling with addiction and want to find recovery. That being said, on a daily basis, I do intakes with individuals. Today, for an example, I did three. Within an hour and a half time, two were Groton residents that were looking to either go into treatment or go into a sober house after they were leaving a treatment process, uh, program. So basically, when they get into, say they go to Stoneton Institute or any other treatment program in Connecticut, a lot of times, they're at their, their end. Their families have exhausted their funds. They've, they have nothing, probably don't even have anything but the clothes that are on their back. So when they call me, they are desperate to not be, and we're endless, we're ending homelessness at this point, because if they don't have a place to go, recovery is not gonna happen if you send them right back onto the streets. So we're able to give them, we call, we do a screening on them, make sure they don't have any, like, outstanding warrants, make sure if they do, they have to check in through the police department. But we get them into sober living, and we usually pay for two to four weeks for them to get into the home. A lot of times, it's one to two in the beginning. We encourage them to get into the home and try right away to start looking for work. The one thing I will tell you that COVID has created, it wasn't just the perfect storm for everybody, but really for people in recovery, it's been kind of an underlying blessing because there is so many of jobs available, they aren't having as much difficulty getting jobs. So a lot of times, two weeks is enough for them to get into a sober house. Then what happens is basic needs, the state of Connecticut will kick in and help their basic needs. That gives them time to maybe get a part-time job and, you know, work first on their recovery going forward. One thing we're very, very proud about that we actually implemented is, we are a bridge for these individuals, finding the process to recovery and to really sustain recovery. We know that it's a chronically relapsing disease, and we know that they've been using for so long. Some of the things that they're lacking are coping skills and life skills. So we partnered with Life Happens, which is another Groton organization. He is a therapist here in Groton, right, right around the corner from the police station. We partnered with them with a discovery mentor program. That is another thing that's not funded by the state insurance. I would say 95% of the people that we deal with have Husky D. insurance. So they're able to be, given a referral to Life Happens, go through the discovery mentor, be worked with, and we actually pay that. It's about $25 an hour for them to get life and coping skills. I want to give you an example of an individual who actually had come from New York, and of course, no names, but he actually had a life of gang violence. And he came here and was able to go to this discovery mentor program. He was able to get his license back, get his life back on track, get some financial, how to, how to deal with his finances. He got a job with the help of this organization, Life Happens, too, going through what we fund the discovery mentor program. He actually saved the life of somebody at this job he was at that went into cardiac arrest. When the police came to take the person, you know, to bring him to the hospital, there was an old, old outstanding warrant for this person. And as you can imagine here, you just like saved a life, then you find yourself in handcuffs. But the great thing was, the resources that they were connected to, they went to court and bat, to bat for him, and all charges were dropped, because it showed that he was working hard in his recovery to make a change, and he was giving another chance at life. And so those are the things that I'm proud about. We are very proud, too, that we are recognizing that every time we get somebody into recovery, there's somebody right behind them that's in active addiction. So the middle school has been ignored. We have a great program, Dare, we don't want to get rid of it, but it's only for fifth grade, and not every school's even doing it anymore. So we have really concentrated on working on middle school kids, because when we work with somebody and we ask them what age they started using, it's usually between the ages of 12 and 14 years old. That is the golden age when they start using substances on their brain, on their young brain that's not matured. So we're doing a lot of work. Another thing we are very proud about is we, I had come up with an idea of a play, because every time we've gone to a school and talked to kids, we want the parents that night to come to the room, and I think, Andre, you might have gone to a couple of the forums that we were at, and then you get maybe five parents show up. And we want to get to these parents to say, these are the signs, these are the symptoms, you know, these are things you, you want to look out for, whether the weight loss, whether the change of their, you know, their appearance, whether they're not taking care of themselves. These are, there are certain things that parents can educate themselves on, but I couldn't get them to the room all the time. So I said, let's come up with a play that is real people that we've helped, that feel comfortable in their recovery, or people we've helped that may not have meant, that have not made it, unfortunately, and we'll come up with a play about their life. And the school's drama club will act out individuals, and during the day, during the class day, and then at night, they can perform, this is at no cost from Community Speaks Out to them, this is no cost to the school system. We don't want to over, you know, with education budget, we don't want to charge anything. This is all what we've done. So they'll perform at night, and they can use it as their fundraiser for their drug-free alcohol party for their 12th grade year, whatever they want to use the funds for, to help, you know, combat substance use in their own school. And so right now, we're just getting ready to sign our copyright so that this can lay out, this can roll out this year. This, there's a lot of work being done. We actually ran in here because we're in the middle of our gala planning committee, and we had a lot to do tonight. So I can promise you, as far as the $22,000 that's been out there, I don't know of any other organization that does not take money from, you know, that's not funded by the government by, or the state of Connecticut. We have no paid employees. So when it says how much money you have to use out of that budget, there's no money going towards anybody's salaries. We work for free, because this is our passion. So I know that this will go to good use, and, you know, we work with a ton of Groton residents every day, helping them get to the next level of finding their recovery. So I just want to thank you for considering us, and I think that it's, the money is going to the right organization, if I can say so myself.
Thank you. Yes, thank you for work, all the work that you do. And if we have any questions from the council, Counsel Jones.
Great. Thank you a lot for all the stuff that you're doing. It's really quite amazing. Can you just tell us a little bit how many people a year you're helping? How many kind of run, how many people go through your organization?
So that's the tough part. We, we usually help people more than once. So like, say, last year, I think we were up to 136 people, but they were helped more than once. That's 136 individuals. That's not including their family members. So for an example, I just helped a girl get into, she's down in Torrington right now, into treatment program, trying to help the, and I'm actually back, side by side with the aftercare, trying to find her an aftercare program so she doesn't come back to Groton where all her connections are. That family, we've been at two, to their homes, meetings that lasted two hours at a time. Me and Joe went to those meetings to speak with the family, to give them the tools. They went from, they made an unbelievable transformation, and she is now in, into treatment centers. So it's, it's thousands of people that we're touching every year.
We, we meet the third Wednesday of every month. We have an office on Thame Street. We rented a place right across from Paul's Pasta, and I encourage people to come, even if they have no addiction in their life or family, because it's bound to hit you, especially seeing the numbers that we see. When we first started, I was alarmed as, as a council to find out that we were losing, I think it was 47,000 people a year. It just seemed overwhelming to me. This past year, we lost 107,000 people to overdoses, with 85% of those being fentanyl. And, and so what we see over and over are folks that will, you know, they get frustrated because in New Haven, there was 20 overdoses, but they don't report it anymore. In the Health Department, my wife and I would say, you need to start telling people. And we were naive at the time, because the reason the Health Department doesn't make that public is because if they told someone that 20 people overdosed in New London, you'd have people driving from Syracuse, New York, tonight to come down and buy those drugs. There's no logic to this. You know, folks that are looking for these drugs are looking for the high, and it's, and when they hear people are dying, that's what they'll do. So if you're there at home and you're trying to help your loved one, and you're trying to figure this out on your own, it's impossible. There's no handbook for it, there's no playbook. Tammy and I can give you a lot of tools, but it's gonna be different for every family. And that's what's, that's what's so important about this work. It's not, it really isn't about the money, because we're, we're an organization that runs on a probably a $50,000 a year budget, but the, the help that we do, it's the parents and the education that they get, that really changes the outlook and outcomes for the people that we help.
And, and I do want to just piggyback off of you, too. He mentioned Chase and the high. There is, there is, part of this is Chase and the high, because you're never gonna get the high that you got the first time that you actually picked up a substance, but for the most part, it's more about not being sick. So once a person, whether it was a choice, whether it was through a doctor because you had surgery and you became dependent and quickly became addicted, once that's there, you are, taking the flu and times out by 100, that's probably how you're gonna feel when you're coming through withdrawals. So the urgency for you to pick up is ve, to go find that drug is very strong. So those are the vulnerable population that they see there's 20 overdoses, they know that stuff is very strong, and they know that it's the second, next level for them to actually sustain feeling better for a little bit longer than they usually do. So I just wanted to make sure I clarify that.
Counsel Casiri.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So one of the strongest reasons why I wanted to make sure that Community Speaks Out was getting the money right away and that we weren't putting it in a bank account and waiting for process was, I mean, you mentioned that you did three intakes a day today.
Just today.
Just today. Is that a normal amount of intakes that you're doing daily?
There are, sometimes I could do several a day. It, it all depends. Sometimes it does get, it does happen around the overdoses. People do do, people do do, people do get scared when their friends just die. You know, just because they're addicted doesn't mean if they have lost two friends in one day that they're gonna all, some of the people are gonna scramble looking to get into some treatment. So it can vary, but all, there's not a week that goes by that I'm not getting several calls.
So it was definitely important that we got this money out there quickly?
Oh, yeah.
Because you guys are gonna save a life with this money immediately.
Absolutely.
Great. And so coming from the law enforcement world, I think of like mutual aid kind of stuff. So are you working with other organizations regularly?
Yes. Life Happens, like I said, we're working with them. We look, we work with the local police departments, too. I just got a call last night from the Groton City Police Department letting, they gave our information out to a young person that's gonna need some help. They're gonna follow up to the, hoping that that person gets help. We also have been working with Phoenix. They're a recovery activity center. So they raise money, too, and so we have recovery activities. So in our office, we're able to utilize our space. Narinon is a meeting that they use our space on Thursdays. The Phoenix uses our space on every other Sunday. So they're able to do hula hooping, and we're also able to pay for sober activities, because it might, you guys can imagine, you guys have your regular lives, and you may, you know, plan trips and plan to go do some kind of activity. Well, somebody in recovery is coming off of really no money, no support half the time, and what are they going to do? We don't here in our area have recovery clubs. If you drive to New Hampshire, you're gonna see recovery club after recovery club, and they're all over the place. They are very strong net, network of recovery-friendly communities. We are making- We are making strides here in this area, but we don't have anywhere for them to go on a Friday or Saturday night. What is a 24-year-old, 22-year-old, where they want to go on a Friday, Saturday night? I can answer you from my own son's experience, a bar. And it doesn't always turn out so well. So we want to give them options other than going to a bar or meeting up with their friends. So we do fishing trips. We do these, we're just going to be booking an escape room for a Groton sober house of 15 or 11 women plus two adults, extra adults that are going to go to escape rooms and mystified and mystic. Who would ever have that opportunity to do that? They just barely can make their bills. So keeping them busy on those nights where all of us who may not have addiction that can go to say a restaurant or a bar or anything like that, they don't have that kind of luxury. They have to be very mindful of where they are. So yeah, we, we have gotten, reached out from, we also work with-
Probably the biggest work that we've done is ancient history now, but we actually partnered up with C-Car.
Yep.
And we, we became certi-, CTARR, we became a certifying board. So what was happening, what we saw, Tammy and I bring in, you know, food and, and stuff to people that were in recovery and helping blankets and pillows. And these, these places they live were so horrible and so horrific that they, you know, people were just buying houses and stuffing people in them and not really, not focusing on recovery. There was, there was no Narcan in the house, no fire extinguishers, many times not doors on, so people didn't have privacy. People were still using in the homes. The homes that we pay for sober living, not every time, but we really concentrate on going to homes that we certified or CTARR certified. So we know that the things are happening at least, and nothing's perfect and bad things can happen in any home, especially with this disease. But it really, it was game changer because the state, we passed a bill that made homes that were going to receive any money from Demus be certified by Community Speaks Out or CTARR, or through CTARR. So we had folks that were going out to these homes, making sure that, you know, even that there wasn't chipping paint. We started, now some of these places, some of the nicest houses in the neighborhood, which lends to recovery because if you're in the worst house in the worst neighborhood, the next door neighbor is not very happy that you're there. But when all of a sudden the house looks good and then we focused on community engagement with the folks that live in sober homes, make sure you say hi to your neighbors. If you see them putting something in the house, offer them some help. And they've done that. And it's little things like that that we've been able to do.
And I want to remind everyone too, is that one thing, there's a stigma that's attached to all of this. This has been deemed a disease by the medical association. So anybody with any other disease would not be thrown in a house with chipping paint and not running water. They, you want to be able to have people go. Individuals, go somewhere with dignity and a conducive place to actually heal and actually get into real recovery. What we have now is getting so much better. Recovery 12 Solution has many houses. They do have a Groton house and Ahava House has one here in Poughkeepsie Bridge. And that's an all women's house and we deal a lot with them. So yeah, and the other partnerships we're doing, we have getting a lot of reach out by, what was the boxing organization?
Yeah, that was great.
They had a boxing tournament for young kids where they can go somewhere to actually do a, I would say-
It was Kent Board. It was actually, there were, there were 13 bouts and all, and Community Speaks Out ended up buying $50 gift cards through the violence prevention grant.
Yep.
So each, each participant got a $50 gift card and, and these are, these are kids that come out of, come from neighbors where I grew up, where many of them have never been out of state or, or, so when they got a $50 gift card, that was going to allow them to buy boxing gear or whatever they were going to buy at Dick's Sporting because they were, they were just like-
And we were able to spread the message and he wants to continue that with us. He wants to do some more things with us and spread the message of addiction. We're going to also be partnering with the Groton Town Little League also. We want to be able to have a chance with these young kids to say, you know, I'm willing to talk about Joey's story. When Joey was alive, Joey, you know, his life was put out there and I know it was very difficult on my son, but his life was put out there, right on the news. But I knew that there was a higher, there was something good that was going to come out of Joey's story. Too much time was spent not speaking about it because people were ashamed, like stigma again I was talking about. But we, we just got approached also by Gino DeMeo from Sound Community Services, New London. People are reaching out to us because they want to partner with us because they know that we're doing some tremendous things, but we're also covering, our tentacles are everywhere as far as trying to get this, combat this from all different angles.
Thank you both for all you're doing for recovery and for our community.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council Boarder?
Thank you. Just wanted to thank you for your efforts, community outreach and the human resource line. It's one of my most passionate line on every budget. I know that when we go over the budget and we have the outside resources, it only amounts to about 85,000 and it's always, not always, but at times it can take the longest to get through, but it's actually the smallest amount of money. So it's something I support. I just had a question, other towns also are receiving funds from the state that, okay. And is every town getting the same amount, do we know?
I don't think, I don't think that's true. I think New London would get more. A lot of it is going to be based on how many incidences you may have had in your town.
Okay.
And obviously New London's going to be a center because they have a hospital.
Gotcha. And the way that the state wrote the bill, is it that it has to be, it's given to certain towns? Does that particular money have to be earmarked for town residents or it can be dispersed? I know that, you know, other towns are getting it and it seems like there should be a partnership. So I was just curious how like in conjunction, like, you know, you might have a resident here, but there might be a space there or someone might feel comfortable so that can be a connectability with the funds.
And it's so fluid. It's so, it's so fluid, not just, not the funds aren't fluid, but the, the actual patients, I'll call them, the people that are in addiction. Many times they come to the cities for services and they consider us a city now based on how many sober homes we have and really even having an institution right here in Grime, which has been very, very good. I remember on the council, they weren't here before and now they are. So, you know, what New London's dealing with in particular is when somebody leaves Torrington for, for, for any reason and they come down here, whether it was to buy drugs or whatever they were doing, and if they overdose here, all of a sudden they become a resident of New London or Groton. So that money, even though it's Torrington resident and Torrington got money for the opiate addiction, will probably be helping that person through Community Speaks Out. And that's where that, so it's really hard to track exactly where the money's going to which person. But if you make recovery overall a good thing in this area, and that's what we're tending to do, we're probably going to end up drawing more people that are into, you know, there's a, from the opposite side, people say, well, you don't want to do that because you want to encourage people to come. But positive recovery, like we've seen in New Hampshire and other places where they do have places to do or things to do, ends up having positive results even for the people that live here.
Now that's good to hear that it's kind of a, you know, there's no restrictions on it per se in the sense that if it's, every town's getting a different number depending on the need and it's not, you know, because it is, it is ever fluent and with the homelessness patients that are in recovery, from my experience of, you know, working in that field for a while, it's, it's definitely a thing where the turnover where they live is very high. So it is hard to stay, keep from homelessness and so sometimes they're moved around a lot. And so it's great that the funds are allocated, you know, not sound town, sound town targeted. It can be dispersed, which is great because it is a community effort.
I actually got to read the grant. It's such, it's a weird, it says the remediation of opioids. I wish, it sounds like, because when I think of remediation, I think that we're going to go pick the asbestos off the floor in this building or rip down, how many times have you guys heard the word remediation? You're like, oh, that means asbestos. I wish it was that easy. I wish, I wish it was remediation was us just going and picking up the opiates and throwing it in the garbage can. But that's not what this is. But it says 70% of the money needs to go towards the remediation. And I really, I would venture to say that 95% of Community Speaks Out money goes to remediation. The other five, we have to pay rent for the building we're in. And we, we got an awful lot of donations even from our board members that sit on our board and do these long meetings and, and do all this outreach, but then dig into their own pockets on top of that. So I'm not afraid of, at all of seeing how that money would be spent or making sure we hit a 70% mark. We have no paid staff. So us hitting goals is very, very easy.
I also like the fact that you said you're going to start going into the middle schools and working on prevention because definitely, you know, from a person who grew up here, you know, yes, you knew the students who were using in middle school and even now, you know, you hear that it's happening at an earlier age. And so that's definitely awesome to hear that that approach, any connectability with the inmates that are being released into our community that had passed addiction, maybe any collaboration with any of the programs with, there's a big push to try to work towards, you know, helping folks get back into the community. And part of that is a lot of them have come from addiction and drug selling. Going back into the same neighborhood where they were is very hard for them to get away from that. And sometimes if they're targeted, not targeted, but linked before discharge with a program like this, the success rate is a lot higher. So I was hoping, you know, there would be, I mean, our local prison, the women's prison and the one down the road would be the easiest, but any connectability or something to, you know, maybe think about down the road.
We almost go hand in hand. Anyone that's gone through addiction usually has gone through the system in some form or shape. And, you know, we actually, I was, I'm the job guy. I'm a construction worker. I have been my whole life and since I've been involved in this, I'm the guy they call, hey, can you, can you get this guy a job? Can you get that guy a job? Because that's the connectability you need because once you have a job, things change. So yeah, we, we have been a connection that way. Somebody that's in recovery, actually I was able to hire at the company I work at, someone that lives in a sober home. So, and we're also going to refer them to people. We have people that work and got some very, very good jobs at some very nice places. Oh, I'm sorry.
I wanted to answer to you, Council Boarder. You mentioned Groton residents or the, I wanted to also remind everybody here that we are the town that has Stonington Institute, which is the six-week residential IOP program. So we get a lot of calls directly or emails directly from Stonington Institute and because most of them go in there homeless, they become a Groton resident at that point. So we do, we will see a very high amount. But when I do an intake, I actually go a little step further because we're trying to get some of these KPIs to understand, like later on down the road, okay, you're homeless. So you started here in Groton at Stonington Institute. Where's your hometown? So it could be Waterbury. I'm, we're tracking that right now because I'm hoping down the road, further down the road, that we can help cities like New London who has so many social services or even Groton that's going to see more that we're going to need because we do have Stonington Institute right here in Groton now. So I wanted to make sure I mentioned that. And CTARR is spelt C-T-A-R-R if you want to look into the Connecticut Recovery certifications on that. But to mention the people incarcerated, there are programs set up with SCAD and there's programs set up with the recovery homes, especially ACURE, that they will connect them with getting housing, like say they are there, they're clean or on the medication assisted treatment program, they will set them up before they get out to go to their treatment program through housing through SCAD or through Sound Community or through ACURE. So they get like basic needs beds that are specifically earmarked for people coming out of prison.
Yeah. I just didn't know if you guys had anything set up where, when they're being discharged, if they're like Groton residents and they could be linked in. Because some that are coming out, the recidivism rate of going back in, any extra programming to get involved in something like this before it becomes a problem? Kind of like the middle school prevention, which would be kind of a linkability. But I mean, just something I was just thinking of.
Yes.
Really cool and I appreciate everything you guys.
It's something to think about. Like I did want to mention to you that we don't really call them our clients just because like we're not a, a treatment program or, so we're really, we're a bridge. So we do, like ACURE say has someone that's coming out of prison. They know we have, they're all well aware that we have meetings and our meetings are the third Wednesday of every month. Andre, you, I know you've attended, other people here have attended. They, we made sure that we had a community-based support group. So if the town council wanted to come in and learn about addiction, they could. Or if you had somebody in your family and you wanted to learn about addiction, you could. So in our room last week, we had people that were in recovery, people that had loved ones in addiction, we had people that lost their loved ones. So we have, we encompass everything and they're just people that just want to learn. We actually did a Williams School one time and had a mom come and stood up and said, I don't have anybody that in my family that's addicted, but I want to make sure I educate myself just so I'm aware, which those are powerful things that happen out of just one thing. And yes, I want to say portion, I'm just going to be disrespectful, Council Boarder. The play, I think we're really hoping it goes to the middle school. That's where we're targeting it and the high school too. But just keep your eye out for it. It's called I Am More. And we, we talk about how you're more than just a baseball player, a football player, a scholar. You know, there's a lot of things, your anxiety, your depression, your addiction. So it's, it's, keep your eye out on that and I would, I will make sure that I invite you guys to the rolling out of them. I think Rosso wants to take it on first, but we'll see what happens.
My last thing was at middle school, one of the big things that I'm noticing just is the vaping and, you know, nicotine is an addiction. And right now, I mean, the middle school kids and high school, and then it turns into other things, right? Because if you're willing to try nicotine illegally and get addicted to that, it does start to kind of segue into other things to be, is this program possibly going to incorporate, you know, that aspect with the middle school, looking at the addiction vaping right now? Because it's so easy and clean smelling, most of these kids are smoking it. It's attractive because it's fruit flavored, fruit smelling, it smells sweet and a lot of people don't even know their kids are even doing it.
So we pay speakers, so for example, we had a situation that happened at Montville High School and we got a call and we paid junior high school. This is middle schoolers. Someone went to the hospital. So we quickly called one of our speakers who is in recovery and he literally was in the hospital for a long time. He almost died. And he did bring up that conversation during his speaking event. He is like a, does slam poetry, but the kids are, he's very relevant to the kids. The kids love him. I know that GASP does a lot of that with tobacco and vaping and stuff. And I want to say that addiction's addiction. So if someone calls and they say, I'm an alcoholic and I need your help, we're going to help them. If they say, you know, my child's vaping, we are going to talk with them. I will say that we did start a youth support group. Right now we're doing activities for the summer. These are young people who either their mother, their father, their brother, their sister, their grandparent has died and they've been impacted by addiction. And we're trying to stop that cycle because there is a genetic component to this. And so we are calling it a youth empowerment group because we're empowering them to take back their power. Even though they had no power to stop their loved one from, you know, going down that path, they have a choice now and to empower themselves to make sure they stay away from addiction, you know, stay away from drugs or any other substance. They know alcohol, tobacco, anything that you put into your brain, before the age of 21, you increase your risk of becoming an addict tenfold. So we send that home with them. The longer you can keep your body holistic and free of substance, you're going to have a better outcome if not. So those are messages that we do send to all of the kids we talk to.
Thank you for all you guys' efforts and help with the community. It means a lot.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Council Franco.
Hello and thank you for coming. I, after our meeting and we allocated funding to Community Speaks Out, I asked for a referral to bring you here so you could explain things because it seems like there are some people in our community who may not know what you do and this is a great educational forum for, you know, to teach people in our community about what you do. I had become friends with both of you probably within the last five years. We do a lot in our community and probably the last maybe year or so, I have been in touch with Tammy and Joe a lot. When it came to beautification of our community and issues, we're both very passionate about some of these items. And I even got Tammy out there doing some gardening, even though she is not a gardener. And, and what, something that we ended up working together with is the beautification committee and Community Speaks Out, where we were, we were sort of at a loss of figuring out how we can get people to come and work on some of our projects. And as I talked to you, you found a solution. And there are people, that Community Speaks Out, that you know of people that need community hours. And you have come and you've worked with Groton on our beautification projects, the people that you have set us up with, and it has been wonderful. And I will tell you, there is an absolute stigma around people who have these type of problems because I will tell somebody that, you know, there's going to be somebody coming in to put their community hours in and I, and people are very hesitant to maybe want to work with them. And then after they've worked with them, they have come back to me and said that they are the best people, the best kids. are the best people, the best kids. They were so great and they were so happy to work with them. And they have done absolute wonderful work in our community and I'm honestly so proud to work with you on this. So there have been other, some other issues that have been brought up regarding the grant. And are there any other organizations within our community that are not funded by the state of Connecticut? Because, I mean, I know, like, GASP is funded by the state of Connecticut through Ledley and things of that nature. Is there anybody in Groton that is not funded fully by the state of Connecticut? I understand that you probably receive grants that you might apply for.
Grant.
But how, are you funded, any other, you know, I mean, is there anybody that's not funded by the state?
We're not aware of it. The only group that, that we were aware of early on was Shining Light on Heroin with Jim Spellman and those folks. And they weren't really into fundraising or, they were more just an awareness group. They were just trying to make sure that, and trying to get rid of the stigma by just shouting it from the top of the roof, which at the time was very bold. I think if we look back and remember at the time when that group was started, they said, oh my God, they just said the word heroin on the street because it needed to be said at that time. And I think the reason we started the group is because we went to go pull money out of our pocket to help our son and realized that it was expensive enough for us and we had insurance and just absolutely unaffordable for our neighbors and our good friends and people that I coached in baseball. And went right down the street from our house. So we were so proud that I coached baseball, basketball and wrestling and Tammy coached cheerleading and we knew every single kid and we knew what Groton was and what was happening in the town. And then when Joey got addicted, I went to a church to figure out a parents group and tried to figure it out. And we ended up in the Narcotics Anonymous group. And I saw three former players in the church basement, three quarters of a mile from my house, that were struggling to survive. And 75 other residents that were struggling to survive right down the street from my house. So we didn't know everything and we're actually embarrassed of it, but the players were embarrassed that I was there. And we made a promise that night that we were going to make every difference that we could. And that's what we've, we feel like we've done. We're trying. But to see the numbers go up and up from 45,000 to 60,000 to 77,000 to 83,000 to 107,000 that it is today is all discouraging, but we're fighting the fight.
The only other place that I know that is another nonprofit like us, very similar, would be Matt's Mission. And they're out of Norwich, Connecticut, or Jewett City, Connecticut, Norwich area. They, I don't know where their office is. I think their office is in Jewett City.
Okay. And then, how much does a typical stay in rehab cost?
Thirty, thirty to forty thousand if you have zero insurance. I was lucky enough to pay 500 because I had insurance. And then had my, called my really good friend and suggested that he send his son. And he called me really upset. This is a story that will, this is the story that motivated us. Because I had this really good friend that said it was, why'd you have me call these people? In a lot worse language, because he was mad at me, because they told me $30,000. I had no idea that it was 30,000. This is seven years ago. And it was because, you know, and his only crime was, he had a different job than I had. And my insurance covered it and his didn't. And that's what motivated me to do a lot of different things, but certainly to do this one. So the money and the lawsuit money in the 20,000, it is an absolute drop in the bucket of what needs to happen, but it's something. And I know as a council, every time that you have money and you have to distribute it, you have to think of how and what's the best way. And I don't want to toot our own horn here, but I really do think, especially in Groton, we really have changed the conversation. Tammy, in the beginning, had a chief of police from Gloucester, Mass. come down. And our chief currently wasn't even chief at the time, for sorrow. And he came to that meeting before he was chief. And then the chief of the city in Stonington went to Gloucester with us to try to understand what they were doing up there. Like, all these things that happened and were changed, happened as a community.
But Groton was the forefront.
Groton was.
Groton has been the forefront. Groton Town and City have both taken the lead on changing the way they treat people when they come, when they pull them over or when they come upon someone that has addicted. They have, they really are.
Ask somebody in addiction that's been, that's been, that's been brought back to life in two different towns. It's almost like we should get a five-star review. Not, you know, but in all honesty, I think because of the work that we've been able to do and going into, when they change shifts, you know, I'll actually go there and bring somebody that's in recovery or bring a parent. And the parent will sit there and look at cops that saved his son or daughter and able to thank them. I mean, you want to talk about goosebumps and it re-motivates the police to do the job they're doing. They've been doing this job for about 15 years now or 20 years where this addiction is taking over the country. And a lot of times, just because we don't have the communication to tell them that this person did survive. Because we have people now that are in recovery that you may know and you may, you may have seen them around and you may think they're dead now, but they could be in another state. We have people that moved to California and they can't come back, but they're living a really good life. Those are the stories that, that we feel responsible to tell the first responders. Because all the responders knew now was they put someone in the ambulance seven times in three months, saved their lives, and then they disappeared. And they just assumed that they're dead. And that's probably a good assumption sometimes, but that's not always the truth. And that's the story, the connection that we're making.
So Rachel, I wanted to add to the, answer the question a little bit clearer. Like, as far as like detoxing, that's very expensive. So like, say at Stonington Institute, I think it's probably like $3,500 to $5,000 to detox at Stonington Institute. So the reality is, most people will, you can't go to Stonington anymore without insurance. You used to be able to. But now in our area, if you don't have insurance, the only place you can go to is SCAD and they will help you get on state insurance. It just recently changed with Stonington Institute. It was a lot easier on us to say, you don't have insurance because you're homeless. Think about it. You can't get Husky D if you don't have an address. So it makes it very difficult for someone to get help. And if we were going to be paying, you know, 5,000 for each person going into, you know, to go and get detox, then how much it's going to cost for the treatment center? We would be out of money very fast. So thank God SCAD's still offering those services. But, yeah, our goal is never going to be able to, you know, pay the whole entire thing. I have been able to be blessed and get some places that I've made connections with, resources and getting free, like, scholarships for someone to go to HiWatch. I've had that happen. And they're still in recovery today. She had Husky insurance. So the majority of people with Husky D, they're going to stay in state because they can't leave the state of Connecticut. There's very few places out of the state they can go to. Butler Hospital's one of them and there's one place in New York I think they can go to. People that have health insurance, I think what we're all finding right now is they have large deductibles. And that's something eventually, maybe down the road, we can try to help with some of that deductible stuff. But, or we'll play a plane ticket for them to leave to go to their treatment center if they have, happen to be lucky to have insurance. And they have the, you know, the luxury of going out of state as opposed to waiting till a bed opens here.
But we served 136 people this year. If each one we gave $1,000 to, that's, that's a budget buster. You know, so we do have money in the bank and we're able to help. We always wonder, are 25 people going to call next week? Because really, even just the sober living cost, that's $600 a person. You know, 10 people, $6,000. So it does go fast, but again, I think, and what I tell people mostly is when Tammy is vetting people, I'm like on the phone, just tell them, y'all pay for it, Tam. Just give them the money. And she goes, no, no, because everyone's getting these, the tax returns right now. She starts digging.
Like when COVID hit.
So she goes, are you getting a tax return? She goes, um, yeah? And she goes, okay, so let's see if that comes in next weekend. So we're very judicious with the money because we understand that it's not limitless. And people, and to me, where it's just like, okay, they ask, just give it to them. There's a huge process. You have to get by, it's like that at my house too, actually. So they're feeling the pain that I feel.
All right. And then, let me see here. So then, as much as I've talked to you probably in the last year dealing with some of your beautification topics, and it seems like every time I'm on the phone with you, you talk to me about some issues that are going on in our community regarding, you know, somebody who needs help.
Yeah.
And I mean, honestly, it's almost every conversation I have with you, you're telling me a story of somebody. And I've learned so much with you. Such as, there was a time where I drove by your house and I stopped and I said, hey, Joe, come help us plant these trees. And I was with Kathy Chase. And she was like, he just came and helped us plant some trees down in the neighborhood. And somebody approached us and he was frantic and was looking for help. And I'm in a neighborhood that I don't know very well and I just didn't even know what to do. And I was like, Joe. And Joe just stepped right up. And, I mean, he's, he's used to dealing with people that are in some kind of crisis. And where I was sort of like a little shocked and didn't know what to do. And Kathy and I were like, Kathy Chase and I stood there and just watched Joe take over and dealt with the issue. And then I heard, you know, some of the backstory later on and just amazed that it's, these things are happening everywhere. And it's, it's just, to see you handle it the way you guys handle it and such sorrow that you deal with on such, almost a daily basis and that you, I'm in awe of the things that you guys accomplish and help our community with. Because it is not an easy, it's not an easy role you're in. And I truly appreciate you for doing this for our community. And with that, I'm going to end on a little happy note that I'm excited to attend your gala this Saturday.
Yes.
For Community Speaks Out. And, and I will hope to see you on Saturday.
Thank you.
You'll definitely see us there.
Yes, and I'm excited and we'll see you.
If anyone else wants to come, let me know.
Yeah, let us know.
So if anybody needs tickets, contact Community Speaks Out. Thank you.
Very good. Councilor Casiri?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very quickly, for anyone that's watching this that may be sitting there saying, wow, I may need to reach out to you guys. How can someone get ahold of you right now? Community Speaks Out with Joe and Tammy Dela Cruz, how would they get ahold of you?
860-271-1835.
Are you guys on Facebook?
We're on Facebook and we also have www.community speaks out.org, which is our website.
Okay. Great, thanks.
Thank you. Councilor Baumgartner?
Yes. I just want to thank you both for coming out this evening and obviously a very busy week preparing for the gala. And just want to thank you for your continued valiant efforts over the years. As Councilor Franco shared, having dealt with enough personal sorrow and, you know, to step up for the community in the way that you have is just absolutely remarkable. And you've taught me so much and I know so much, any others, about empathy and giving back. So thank you for that. And I do have a few questions, just so you, Joe, you shared some pretty staggering numbers that, you know, 85% of those lost to opioids in the United States was due to fentanyl. And is that something you're seeing more and more? You know, obviously, the overdoses, but, you know, the deaths, but the overdoses as well?
What's scary about the fentanyl part, and I think, and if you're out there listening and you haven't tried drugs and you're young, before, we used to be, you know, this is your brain, this is your brain on drugs. It was scary. They thought they were going to scare kids. This is obviously, this is, this is the forefront. Now, we actually have text messages, families are getting to see the cell phones after someone passes away, where these kids thought 1,000% they were getting cocaine. And I'm not telling people that cocaine is a safe drug, but these folks know that if they use cocaine, that they would probably live and survive. We're finding over and over again where a guy says over and over again in texts that there is no fentanyl in my stuff, they're lying. And these folks, for the very first time sometimes, are trying drugs, cocaine, and they're dying. Because fentanyl is basically is used as an elephant tranquilizer. So if you put even the smallest or car fentanyl, but fentanyl is, I think, 30 times stronger than heroin. So if you really, if you think of it that way, you know, where people are putting these things, these types of drugs, and that's why we're seeing it. They're spiking because fentanyl's been added to all the different drugs. They're even finding it in marijuana. So they're.
Well, they're finding it, we want to make sure we send the right message on marijuana. So basically, if you have someone who is packaging up fentanyl and then they're over here packaging up marijuana, there's cross-contamination that they believe is happening. Because there was some kind of, people saying it was being put in the marijuana and they believe it's more of a cross-contamination issue. That being said, heroin's kind of like, not even talking, we're not even talking about, it's all fentanyl now. But we've had recent tests around here that they are using a tranquilizer. It's a, it's actually something that's used in horses. It's called Exline or something like that. A, E, I mean, X-Y-L-I-N-E. And it's really a big problem in Massachusetts. But I have no personal people that actually had, and it's a lot of times found in pressed pills. So they go out and they're thinking they're getting a Percocet or they're, and half the time they may know that it's stronger than that, you know? Or there's fentanyl in it, but there's, they put whatever they can that's cheap. This stuff is very cheap. It's actually a muscle relaxer for, it's used in veterinary offices for horses, for cows. Doesn't take very much, it's very cheap. And they add this stuff to pressed pills or to cocaine or to, and it kills you right away. I mean, it literally suppresses the air of your brain that will, you stop breathing. So multiple, that, benzodiazepines, all of it, they're just throwing, it's just a junk full of drugs. People are just, a lot more accidental overdoses that are happening than when they're thinking they were doing one drug and they're not. They're actually doing the fentanyl. So heroin's kind of like, not even being talked about as much anymore. It's all fentanyl that we're talking more about.
Yeah. And you brought up the meeting held at Fitch High School, I think, at least six, seven years ago now, the Gloucester Police Chief, I was in attendance and learned so much. Obviously, the, you know, how much this stigma, there still is a stigma, but even compared to then, we've made such great strides. And I think in large part because of organizations like Community Speaks Out that strives to end the stigma and talking about it in civic spaces like the council or just, or, you know, pop-up meetings or Recovery Fest. So many different avenues to connect with all types of people, whether the 136 people you helped, you know, in 2021, or the person who just comes over to Williamson and says, I want to learn because it's something that's impacting our community. So that's incredible. I do wonder though, what you, and I did a little bit of research, in the last couple of years, we're starting to see many communities that may not have been directly impacted by the opioid epidemic are, you're starting to see significant increases in use and deaths. I read that 15 to 24-year-olds, black males, over the last year, an 86% increase in deaths. For black males, 46 to 65, the death rates are seven times that of white males last year. And then also, the death rate has increased 47% for Hispanic males. So as we start seeing the issues of fentanyl emerging or people facing addiction out of issues other than, say, oh, I went to the hospital and got hooked on painkillers, where now you're seeing people, you know, using heroin or fentanyl as a result of, you know, addiction issues on the streets. You know, how, how do we change our outreach so that we're, you know, helping a wider spectrum of folks who really do need the help?
So I do believe that we're dealing with a big mental health crisis.
Oh, yeah.
Which obviously goes hand in hand with substance abuse. So we have a lot of people self-medicating. That's kind of where we're at. So obviously, mental health services need to increase, 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 increase. And that's going to be always our struggle, right? I want to tell you a story really quick. And this is a hard story to tell, but I'm going to tell it. I had a young man that I had talked with who was in recovery. And being at New London High School, it's a very diverse school. And I really didn't want just that white kid walking in and telling his story to the school. I was asked by one of the students, can't you get somebody of color in here to kind of talk? Because I think he'd be more relevant for us to, you know, kind of like connect with him better. So I asked this young man, you know, he was a black young man. I asked him, I said, if you ever want a platform, because I never ask someone to speak and I want them to be ready. If you ever want to speak, you know that Community Speaks Out, we really do want to be a platform for anyone that wants to talk, that wants to share their story. We encourage it if you're ready. And he said, why would I ever do that? And I go, oh, no, no, you know, whatever you want to do. He goes, I go, can I just ask you, is it because you're worried about what people are going to think or? And he looked at me and goes, I already have one strike against me, I'm black. Why would I want to give two strikes against me?[1711.01] And that hit, it's hard to hear that from a young man. I mean, he was only nineteen years old, already in recovery. He's like, "I, I can't." And I think we have a lot of work to do to try to do a lot of outreach, because he has a point. I under- you know, I don't understand, I'm not gonna say I do, but it was hard to hear him say that. So I think, yeah, I think that, you know, Officer Nolan does a lot of outreach in New London. I think we need to continue, um, to, you know, go to these schools and, and try to have people that can actually feel, that they can actually stand up and speak. We have one of our young men that's gonna be in our play, um, Dylan, that he has, you know, and not saying the other man didn't have courage, because I completely, um, I felt horrible how he feels, and I apologized to him, and I said, "I wish that, you know, we could do better." But I'm so happy that Dylan's going to be highlighted in our play, and I'm hoping that that will make some change, that he is able to come forward and be one of our highlighted, and he is alive and well and engaged to get married. So I'm hoping that will give people hope in the room.
And we, we have some all-stars out of the black and brown community now that are actually sharing their stories, like Daryl McGraw, people that actually come up and they'll speak and tell stories about, you know, how they got recovery. You know, even, even up, up in Hartford, we were making certain laws that were gonna prevent people from even coaching sports, or, we're seeing it over and over. I talked to, uh, Counsel Franco's husband about, you know, they do background checks, uh, for kids to do, to be little league coaches, and basketball coaches, and, and I coached when I was seventeen and eighteen years old, and maybe not would have been able to coach if, if they did all these background checks back in the day. Some of the best athletes I went to school with got in a lot of trouble. So if you went back in time, those very same kids that got in trouble would not be able to share their knowledge of sport, or even more importantly, their knowledge of life, what they learned, the mistakes they made, how they came back. But we need people to be bold and speak out, like, like, Daryl is one of my heroes, when he stands up in front of a class in New London, and, you know, his story ended well, because people could still see him there, he's alive, he's telling it. You know, he's sharing everything that happened to him, uh, but there are a lot of black and brown people that are afraid to do that, because, you know, if, if your name doesn't sound right, or maybe you don't look right, maybe you don't get the job anyway, why tell them that you were a former addict? Why, why put that self, and, and we heard that over and over again. So it wasn't, wasn't just from one person, it was this overall feeling that people had, and I think that's, part of stigma is gonna be heavy in, in that community, and, uh, but it takes people like Daryl to say, just say it.
And people like Vinny Baker, because if it wasn't for Vinny Baker, Joey wouldn't have spoke out that night at the school. He was very nervous, and Vinny Baker took the stage first, and it may gave Joey the courage to get up and to share his story, so, yeah. Outreach.
Absolutely.
Keep doing it.
And, and that was a nice segue into the Life Happens, the partnership.
Yeah.
And I understand it's a discovery mentorship program, and what are ways the community can get involved in that, if they would like to step up as mentors?
So, it's, they're actually, um, recovery coaches, is kind of what they have. They usually have the, have you ever heard of recovery coaching? They actually have a certification in recovery coaching, but we call them discovery mentors, because they didn't want to be, they wanted to start their own thing. You could reach out to them. I don't know, right now, um, they're pretty vetted, you know, they have to have, like I said, a recovery coach, and I don't know how much expansion they are ready to do right now. We're still in the infancy stages, but they're doing really good work. But, you know, there's always possibly room that we're gonna, that we will take even more off, and I can let people know if they need people.
Come to one of our meetings.
But they run, recovery coaches are needed everywhere. They always, you know, you can go on the Demus website, and they're either having like, you know, it's a course you actually have to go through, it's like a school course, to get a certificate, so, Demus website.
Again, this is a partnership with one, one group, you know, obviously, um, like Community Speaks Out, uh, doing direct intervention, and, and, you know, helping recovery in, but also another group. So, um, it's great to see that there are partnerships already, that, you know, um, if, you know, obviously, uh, Community Speaks Out will be getting the settlement funds, and, um, it's going towards that cause and so many other causes, and, uh, not paying anyone's salary, but, uh, paying for intervention in our community that is so badly needed. So, um, you know, I'm so excited for, for you guys, I can't wait to be an extra in the play, maybe. But, uh, you know, thank you again for, for all your efforts, and, um, we'll be here rooting for, uh, you know, written on the sidelines.
Yeah, I'm glad that Rachel did mention the beautification committee. There's so much, we have our hands in so much, but to actually say we're actually involved with the Groton Town, doing work for Groton Town, these, these individuals, it's not just about community service for some of them, a lot of it's making amends. And what the pra- the pride that they show, and the pictures that they show me after of what they actually did, and then they say, "Maybe I should do a landscape in business." It opens doors for them, and they meet people, and this is connections. One of the girls that we have that is very involved with Community Speaks Out got a job, because a person was sitting there in one of the meetings and heard her story and how she had it through her whole entire life, parents addicted. She, she rose above that, she's got this amazing job, because this person was so like, in awe of what she was doing. I mean, we helped a young man get into a sober house. Joe hired him at Hillary. Um, so he's a recovery-friendly employer now. Like, those are the kind of things that we need to do more of, and Groton's, like, I guess, again, I'm saying, Groton's starting all of this. We need to be very proud that Community Speaks Out, and when we looked at places, we could have left Groton, but we actually found space, it's in Groton City, but it's all to me the same, we made sure, we're based here in Groton, because it all started here.
Yeah, and you, you brought up an important, and I'll yield the floor, but, a very important point about the Stonington Institute, you know, even five years ago, you know, when you, back when you were, you know, on the, on the council, it wasn't, uh, up and running, it was, a few years earlier, it was a daycare, and, um, obviously, it's brought in so many folks in our community who really do need the help. And, you know, I, I think it's wonderful, and, you know, we need more of that, every community needs more of that, because the reality is, addiction, uh, does not discriminate against any zip code. And that's what we, I, I, my biggest takeaway has been from, you know, um, learning about the opioid epidemic in, in, uh, in this region, and certainly our state. So, you know, I'm glad you brought that up, because, um, I, I live on Shenandoah Road in, in the city, and you see, you know, young people, uh, some older people, you know, walking, um, and, um, you know, and may not recognize them, but you, um, you kind of catch on, you know, and sometimes they got their backpacks and everything, but they're minding their own business, doing their thing, and, uh, a lot of the time, I say hello and strike up a conversation, and so.
Glad you do that, because what I do, is I stop, and I roll my window down, and I say, "Recovery is possible," and you hear them hooting and hollering, because they need to be uplifted.
Absolutely.
And if they know they have support just by people driving by and saying hello, it goes far.
That's right. Thank you both, you're the best.
Thank you. Any other counselors? All right, thank you guys for being here. Congratulations on the grant, and we know it will be used well.
All right, guys, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, five-minute break, we'll be back at seven fifty-five.
And I'll make a motion to recommend a resolution authorizing Town Manager Jomber to execute any and all documents to accept the nuclear safety grant in the amounts of $65,900 and refer to the RTM. So moved.
Second, Borlon.
Moved by Melenda, seconded by Borlon. And we have Chief Asaro here for some background.
Good evening, everyone. Yes, the use of this grant is going to help us with a couple of things that we're looking to do. First, there is some salary reimbursement. But second, this is, it will help us use some of this money to install some cameras that will assist from the emergency management perspective, from the EOC as well as our dispatch center. In the event that we have to do a large-scale evacuation of the community. So the Nuclear Safety Fund is money that's provided by Millstone Plan, and it comes to us as we're part of the 10-mile emergency planning zone. So this is a grant that they really fund and the state administers it. You know, a lot of the benefits of this will also be seen when it comes to incidents where the traffic management plan that the state has, if there's a large-scale closure of highways, or if in fact we do have to evacuate Groton and move folks north to some of those communities. We'll be able to monitor different parts of the town, particularly those critical intersections like 20, 41117, 12 and 184, around the subbase on Route 12 moving north. So that's what we're hoping to use this for. There's a lot of things that I think the town will see some benefits from it. Certainly welcome any questions. The other thing I do want to point out, this is not an enforcement tool. This is not something that's used for traffic enforcement. It's really truly just to monitor those intersections.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Counsel Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Chief. Can you just talk a little bit about how long this grant lasts? And is it something that's repeated?
Every year?
It's a one-time grant. We do get it annually. You know, the amount of the funds may change slightly, but it's an annual grant that's administered by Dennis for the Nuclear Safety Fund. But every year, we have to propose different projects, and that's the one that we proposed this year. And generally speaking, we do use some of this to reimburse salaries associated with emergency management.
At the top of Fort Hill, there's a large tower, as there is around the town with horns and things on it. There's a warning tower. Is that the kind of thing that somewhere in the past this grant might have paid for?
Millstone itself does fund those directly. These are different things since the towns, you know, in the 10-mile radius around Waterford are overall eligible to apply for this. It does vary from year to year. But those are that, the system that you're talking about is actually funded differently. That's something that is purchased, but we do maintain it.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Borlon?
Thank you. Thank you for that overview. What percent of this is going towards salary reimbursement?
Requested, well, we requested more than this. It's a percentage of that. So I want the number is, I have to look at the actual grant itself. They can request up to three months of salary for emergency management. We did not receive that much. So it's based on one of our salaries, myself or Captain V. So it's only three months. So it's in the neighborhood of $20,000.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Unanimously nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Thank you, Chief. Okay, on to tax abatement for seniors, disabled, and veterans.
Thank you.
We have Mr. Worsbicky, who is the chair of our committee here with us. And is there someone on the line? I see we have Mary Gardner.
All due work in the committee is due.
Thank you, Paul, for being here. Okay, and you have the floor, Mr. Worsbicky.
Well, I hope each of you has had a chance to read the report that we produced. My remarks won't be much more than just summarizing. We were asked to recommend a course of property tax abate pursuant to the provisions of 12-129 of the Connecticut General statutes. We had a 60-day time limit in terms of how we could do that. And we initially were trying to see, to look at all of the forms of property tax relief that are already is provided by statute. But it became clear to us as we were doing it that there was no way that we could look at all of those, try to figure out what their financial impact would be within a 60-day time period unless we basically met almost every day. So, and we were in general agreement that the way to do it would be to try to come up with a program that would be easy to administer, that would be of genuine benefit to the recipients. If you look at a lot of the types of tax abatement programs that Groton participates in, and those that we don't participate in but are provided by statute, they really provide fairly minimal relief because what they do is they reduce the assessment on a person's property. But when you look at the actual savings in taxes, it's almost nothing. So what we proposed was basically to take an existing program and to, if you feel appropriate, simply add to that by increasing the amount of the tax abatement relief possible under that program. It's called the Circuit Breaker Program, as I set out in the report. And if, what's good about it from our perspective is it benefits the most needy portion of the population. It is easy to administer, and it is easy to determine what the financial impact of taking such an approach would have. Really, all you have to do is look at what it's costing now and increase it by whatever percentage you determine to increase it by. So that's essentially what we're proposing. And I'd be glad to try to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Counsel Baumgartner?
Thank you, John, for your leadership. And also want to thank your fellow committee members for volunteering their time to come up with solutions and innovative solutions to provide tax relief to many of our working families and individuals in our community. Do want to also acknowledge our former colleague, Joseph Perry, who originally made this referral. He is no longer with us, but he made it his fight to see action on this item. And just want to acknowledge him and his privilege to serve with. So my questions, just regarding the tax abatement. I understand you did a, you know, a study of not just the existing tax programs, but also in an inventory of the existing tax privileges that we can extend to individuals. But did the committee at all find some consensus about adopting new programs, or at least even if it was one item where there was a consensus?
I don't think there was any consensus to do anything other than what we're suggesting here.
Okay.
There was significant feeling on the committee that we already provide enough tax abatements as things stand. And there was at least a couple of members who had an up or down vote as to whether or not to have a tax abatement at all, would have voted to have none. So the consensus was that if there was to be an additional tax abatement, it would be in this form.
Okay. And did you, did you study the, if, you know, whether if any of these programs were to be implemented, what the costs would be, or the associated costs?
We did look at some other programs and try to determine what the costs would be. For some of them, it was, it would have been very, very difficult to come to a determination. For others, it wasn't. We relied on the folks that are here by Zoom to help us to do that. And we do have quite a lot of, I have a lot of materials here where they did attempt to come up with some numbers as to what various programs would cost. I did want, I do want to point out that, you know, as I said, we were under the 60-day time limit. And I think that there was a bit of a misunderstanding as to how this process was supposed to work. Because if you look at the statute, what it basically provides is that the council would propose a tax abatement program, and then we as a committee would study that specific proposal and try to make a determination of what the fiscal impact of that would be. However, the way it was actually presented to us is that we were to come up with a proposal. And so rather than spend time, you know, talking about one specific proposal, we ended up trying to study, there are probably, I think there were something like 20 or 30 different tax abatement programs provided by statute. So it became relatively impossible to really study them all in depth and try to figure out what it would cost to implement them, or to come up with our own program. So I think what we ended up doing really was saying, well, wait a minute, who do we want to help here the most? How do we do it in an efficient fashion that the folks at the town can administer efficiently and easily? And the nice thing about this particular proposal is that it doesn't take any additional administrative work because whoever is currently eligible to be in the Circuit Breaker Program will be eligible for this program. And if they're not eligible for Circuit Breaker, they're not eligible for the program. Figuring out who's eligible, figuring out what their tax breaks would be would be a fairly simple matter. And also figuring out what the fiscal impact of whatever percentage increase you might want to implement would also be fairly easy. As I spelled out in the report, you know, I gave an example of if you were to increase the current tax abatement by 50%, but obviously you can pick whatever percentage you want. But it's relatively easy to determine what the fiscal impact of this program would be.
And my final question is, I really liked how you laid out each type of program within the report. And at the end of a section, you indicate, you know, how the taxpayer could benefit or could participate in that program. So it's abundantly clear that for many of these programs, they actually have to apply ahead of time, such as, you know, tax relief for renters, homeowner aid for elderly and disabled. And there are windows, you know, in the case of the tax relief for renters, April 1st to October 1st. And then the case of the homeowner aid, February 1st must be filed with the assessor's office between February 1st and May 13th. And so did the committee look at how we as a town can better articulate or share that information with the public to get that, you know, that information in their hands for at least the tax or the programs we have already on the books?
I would say if we did, if we discussed those things at all, it would have been a fairly brief discussion. It wasn't really within our mandate. And as I said, at least at the beginning, where we sort of tried to start looking at every program that's available by statute, it was rather overwhelming to even just do that. I would add that the statute we're talking about actually allows the town to create its very own tax abatement. It doesn't have to be something that's established, pre-established by statute. And it doesn't prevent the town council from adopting the other statutory types of tax abatements that are already provided for in the various other statutes. This statute stands alone, sort of. It basically gives you the ability to craft within limits. You know, there are , you know, you can't give away, you can't create tax abatements that will cost more than 10% of the total tax revenue that's brought in. I can't imagine anybody doing that anyway. And there's other limitations. But within those limitations, you can create something completely different than anything that happens to be in the statutes at the moment.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. Counsel Kessinger?
Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Worsbicky, for being here. So I thought there was two great points brought up in your report. And the first is being that I completely agree with the fact that the fiscal impact of any program it might recommend should be possible to calculate with a high measure of certainty. If we're going to implement any tax breaks, we should be able to tell the taxpayer what the burden is going to be. So I thought that was great. Also, there was a line about, should not impose any additional administrative burden on town employees, or that any additional burden should be minimal. And I thought that was a great point to bring up, that our town staff is already overworked, and we shouldn't be putting a lot of process on that. And then in the fiscal impacts portion of the report, it says, according to town staff, in 2020, there were 246 Circuit Breaker accounts in Groton. The total tax abatement or amount of revenue lost for those accounts was $128,934.37. And then you explain that with the 50% increase, it would be an extra $64,467.19, which is a total of $193,401.56. So you somewhat addressed this in your opening about the assessment value issue. So the members of our town that are in the Circuit Breaker Program, they're already receiving a tax abatement, correct?
I think I would defer to Mary Gardner to answer that question.
Okay.
I think probably, well, I'm sorry. They are receiving the Circuit Breaker. Yes, they're already receiving that. They may be receiving other tax abatements as well. That I couldn't answer with any degree of specificity. I believe that Mary could probably give that kind of information better than me. But so that's the best I can do as far as that particular question.
Okay. And you were explaining that the benefit is minimal in your opening.
The benefit for, when you're talking about a reduction in the assessed value of property rather than, the Circuit Breaker doesn't do that. The Circuit Breaker literally reduces your tax bill by X amount depending on your income. But certain tax abatements reduce your assessment for your property. So let's say you have a property that's assessed at $300,000 or $200,000, whatever. It might reduce it by $5,000. Well, what does that reduce? Your tax bill by almost, really almost nothing. So this kind of program where you're talking about an actual reduction in the tax bill itself is, you know, if you're trying to address a problem, you should do it effectively. And I think this is more effective. I don't know whether or not, it may very well be too, that it's more difficult to deal with the administrative issues that are involved with those kind of other kinds of tax breaks. I will say that we do participate in some of those types of programs where we do, you know, there's, and again, Mary would be able to give you better information on which ones those are. I have them somewhere in this doc, in my records, but I, you know, finding that would be a lot more difficult. But, you know, we just, I think as a group felt that if we're going to do something or suggest something, it should be something that would actually be of some significant value. value to the recipients.
Great. And that was ultimately, my question was, was there a complaint by people in the Circuit Breaker program that it was just not enough of a, of a tax break?
No, no. I mean, we were, we were tasked with looking at, at the, the current situation and suggesting what other tax abatements would be appropriate if we, if you decide to pass one. And this is the tax abatement program that we felt would be, would be the way to go if you decide to go at all. So no, I, I don't know of any complaints by any of the Circuit Breaker folks. It's possible. But again, they, you know, that, it appeared to us that the people who were eligible for the Circuit Breaker program were the people most in need of some financial help. They're the elderly, people on fixed incomes, or people who are disabled.
Great. Thank you for your response. So my next question, and I know based on your time constraints, you're probably not going to have an answer for me, but I'm just curious. So we know the breakdown right now, according to 2020, with the people over 65, it would have been $193,401.56 total. Okay?
Right. That would be people over 65 who, who are financially eligible. And also people who are disabled, who are financially eligible.
So did your group at all look at, sorry, this is kind of convoluted, but did we look at the breakdown of age groups of Groton residents? Because my concern is if we have a high population of people in their 50s, and we're getting, you know, within the next 10 years of a, of a high percentage of people entering that 65 age range, do you understand what I'm saying?
I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
And the answer to your question is that I don't believe we did that in any significant fashion.
Great. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, John. Can you just explain what the Circuit Breaker program is?
Well, okay. Basically, I think I tried to set it out as well as I could in the, on the second page of the report. Basically, it's an entitlement program that gives people who are financially eligible, who are either disabled or elderly, a reduction in their tax bill based, depend, and then the amount of that reduction is, is a function of what their income is. So the, there's a ceiling as far as, you know, how far, you know, you have to be, I believe what was the, the seal, $46,400 is the, the income threshold for, for married couples. So if you're at that top level, your, your break is going to be a lot lower than if you are, let's say, $26,000 a year. So it's a sliding scale. It, you know, the less money that you, the less your income, the greater the amount of your benefit. And I believe, so let's see, that, I think I grabbed the total, the tax reduction cannot, can be up to $1,250 for a married couple.
And this is an exist, the Circuit Breaker is an existing program that's going on today. People are already doing it.
Right. We're already doing this, and which is why just simply, basically increasing the dollar amounts that people will be eligible to get makes it, from an administrative standpoint, very easy. Because you don't have to do anything more as far as determining eligibility and figuring out how much the person is entitled to is just a question or function, I presume, of changing the formula in your spreadsheet.
So the new program is, what, the name of that new program is 12-129? Is that the name of the?
Well, 12-129 allows, is the statute that provides that the legislative body of a town can create its own tax abatement program of any sort that it wants, really, so long as the total amount of tax break as a result of that program does not exceed 10% of the, of the total tax revenue in the town. And there's, there's other, I mean, I think that's pretty much.
So I'm just, I guess I'm a little confused. I kept thinking that this is a new program going to be put under the same criteria that the Circuit Breaker program is, but is that correct?
Well, what we were tasked with doing was coming up with, with a program that the town might want to enact. As I said before, I think really the way it was supposed to work is that the, the town council was supposed to come to us and say, we would like to enact X. What's the fiscal, fiscal impact of it? But that's not the way it was presented to us. So we went through this and came up with this as a proposal.
So you found a program that kind of fit, it fit all the criteria of what this new piece of legislation or this new statute did?
Well, it does fit the criteria. In other words, it's perfectly legal within that. But we could have come up with something completely different, as long as it, as long as the beneficiaries were the beneficiaries that are set out in the statute, which I believe are people who are elderly and people who are disabled. So that's, this Circuit Breaker program already benefited them. So we just thought that the best way to, to.
So this, so the statute 12-129 allows for a community, Groton, to add some kind of abatement?
Right. I mean, you could decide to, you know, I mean, as far as I know, you could decide to totally exempt these folks from paying anything. As long as the, as long as your, the total abatement of property tax revenue does not exceed 10% of the total real property tax assessed in such municipality in the tax year. So.
So was this a need that's, that's kind of bubbled up, that said, these people, this particular group of people needs more benefits? And you just happened to work with the Circuit Breaker program, fit the same criteria? So you're just going to increase what's in that?
Right.
It could have gone to any one of the other 20 programs that you had.
Right. We could have gone, or we could have created something completely out of our, you know, of our own device.
How do the, how do the people in this program, how do they get into the Circuit Breaker program? Do they have to?
Again, Mary could probably give you a better idea of how, exactly how it works, but essentially you make an application.
So are we reaching all the people that are eligible for this program?
That, I can't tell you. I don't know. Again, I think Mary would, she's here, if you, you might want to direct a question like that to her.
So Mary, I guess my question is, how are these people finding this program? And are we reaching all the people that are eligible for this program?
Well, we don't really know who's eligible. We don't know until they apply. And we have, it's on our website. We have pamphlets that we hand out. We have pamphlets that we set around different town buildings. They're in the town library, they're at the senior center, they're at human social services. I don't really know how else we're, we're supposed to notify people that the program exists, but every time somebody comes into the counter, comes to town hall, and if they have a question about property taxes or veterans' benefit, we always direct them to any program that we offer.
So people, so people kind of stumble across it? Just maybe their friends are doing it? Or they hear that there's a program and they, they need some relief because their, the property taxes is not matching up with their salary? Is that, it just seems kind of?
Yeah.
Like by chance?
It is, well, it is by chance. It is based on income. And there are plenty of people that don't qualify for the program. We have usually several applications every year that we take, and the folks are over income. So, you know, we, I don't know how else we're supposed to advertise for this. It's everywhere that we exist.
Do you have a sense of these, of these other 20 or 30 other programs that are available? Are residents in Groton taking advantage of them? Or is it the town sort of takes advantage of it and makes it eligible for people? Do you have a sense of how many of these other ones are, are going on?
And by the way, just to add to what I said, where we publish it, we put it on GMTV as well. You know, what we're administering is what's required by statute. And anything that the town adopts over and above statute, we're administering that too. We've supplied matrices to the town council and to the task committee of all the available programs. But I think the way this resolution was set out, I think, John, we were limited to looking at 12-129N. I don't think we were tasked with looking at every single program that's out there. So whatever was allowed under that particular statute is what we focused on, which is why we didn't get into the veterans' local option programs that exist.
But these programs are there. People could take advantage of them if they wanted to, or they found, they just went searching for them.
There are other tax abatement programs. Like I said, some of them are, you know, reduce the assessment, some of them, I don't know, are there any others besides the Circuit Breaker that actually just reduce the bill rather than the assessment? Mary?
I honestly haven't looked at the matrix in a while. I, I'm not sure if I can take a quick look at it right now.
Then my final question is, can people do two or three of these programs at the same time?
I believe that's the case. Correct, Mary?
If the statutes allow it, yep. I'm not sure it does for every single program, but it depends on, you know, the enabling legislation has to be in place for us to do anything.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mary.
Counselor Franco?
Thank you. Mr. Burt, are you there?
Yes.
So for full disclosure, my mother and my deceased father benefit from this program as my father was 100% disabled veteran. And they're both, well, he's no longer, but she's a senior citizen and widow of the disabled veteran. Is it okay if I comment and vote on this going, this program?
Yes. I think as long as you put it on the record, it's fine.
All right. Thank you. So I wanted to put that out there as my full disclosure first. And then, so my, my first question is, just so I have this in my mind correctly, if we go to our packet on page 18, which is, where at the very top it says, "Town of Groton, property tax and rent relief for the elderly and totally disabled and veterans' exceptions." The first paragraph, is this the Circuit Breaker? Or is this just another?
I don't know it's on page 17 of your, I don't have that.
Page 18, where it says, "Property tax credits up to $1,250 married, $1,000 for single are available based on a graduated income scale. You're eligible if," and then it goes on to state ages and things of that nature. Is that first section? Or are all of these programs part of the Circuit Breaker in our agenda packet?
No, no. Again, I'm going to ask Mary to correct me if I'm wrong, but the Circuit Breaker is a sort of, all of the, all of these various forms of tax relief are sort of stand on their own. You may be able to stack them if you qualify for more than one, but the Circuit Breaker program itself stands on its own. Am I correct about that, Mary?
Yes. It is a state-required program. It does stand on its own. There are lots of guidelines that we have to review every time we take an application. I apologize, I don't have the page that you're looking at, so I don't know what it is.
Does anybody know if on our, our page 18 of our packet, if that is the first paragraph basically says homeowner aid for elderly and disabled?
Okay, I do have it.
Yeah, yeah. That is, that is, yes. That, that first one is the Circuit Breaker program.
Yes. It is. Kristy just brought it to me, sorry.
That's okay. I just wanted to confirm that my thought processes were correct. So I would, after reading your recommendation, it said it was not unanimous. Additional tax relief was unnecessary, and that additional relief would impose an undue burden on the taxpayer. However, it is fair to say that the committee agrees that if the council wishes to provide an additional tax relief to the elderly and disabled, it should take the form set in this report. And then it goes on to explain how the committee recommends that a percentage increase not exceed 50% of that which the recipients are already entitled. So is that what everybody agreed on, that no more percentage of, than 50%?
Okay, let me back up a little bit. I, I think it's fair to say that the majority of people on the committee did favor an addition, a new tax abatement program. There, but there are not, again, if it had been a question of voting either for or against such a, such a new program, and that was the only issue, there would probably have been a couple of votes to say, we shouldn't have one at all. But everybody agreed that if we were going to do, if, if it, there was going to be, because it's your call, not ours. You're the ones who decide whether to do this. If you do decide to do it, what our, it was pretty unanimous, it was unanimous, that this was the way to go. That, and, and of course, the 50% that we're proposing is completely up to you as well. You could do 100% if you want, or you could do 20%, you know, it's, that's completely up to you as well. So.
Understood. I just want to make sure I was correct in like, that's basically what the committee, what you came out of the committee?
Right.
And stated that if anything, you were going to do is the Circuit Breaker with a 50% increase.
Right.
And then as stated, the impact is approximately $64,000, which would help 246 people that are in these accounts. And I, I don't know who I should ask on this question, but I wonder, would this potentially help? Because obviously it's set up to help the most needy in our community. Would this help keep seniors in our community? Does anybody?
Mary, you have a, I would.
I don't know if it's, who would help?
It would help, it would help them pay their taxes.
So it might help them stay in here if, instead of potentially moving somewhere that, like I hear a lot about moving south, and people saying how the taxes are less in the south, and especially if when you're retired, or you're a senior, or maybe even disabled. That, that is my concern, is to try and help keep our seniors in our community. Because there has been outcry from seniors in our community and some disabled people that have said it's very difficult for them to stay here, and they want to stay here because their family's here, and they don't want them to have to move away. So I would like to see that as what was recommended, if there was going to be an increase, is the Circuit Breaker going in at a 50% increase? And I'm going to actually make that a motion. To recommend the Circuit Breaker increase as presented on page 18 of the homeowner aid for elderly and disabled to be increased by 50%. And I believe if I'm correct in my math, it would be property credits up to $1,925 for married, and that would be $1,500 for singles. Am I correct on that? Mary?
I was writing down your comments.
I'm sorry. And on that?
What was your question?
The 50% increase would be $1,925 for married and $1,500 for singles. Is that correct?
Well, not necessarily, because their benefit is not always a straight shot based on what you're reading.
Right.
Sometimes they max out at $525 or whatever the number is. It's really just 50% of whatever their calculated benefit is now, is what the added benefit would be.
Understood. But the program itself says property tax credits up to, and then it says 1,250. That number would change to 1,925 married or 1,000 for singles.
That would be, that would be 1875, I believe.
1875. I'm, thank you. Appreciate that.
1250 times 1.5.
Right. So I'm sorry, I make a correction in that, to 1825 and 1,500.
1875. 1875 and 1,500.
1875. And 1,500 for singles.
Point of clarification, please?
Sure.
Are we using the amended agenda packet? Because that would be, I think, page 19.
Right.
I know it's the same thing. I just wanted to make sure we're using the right paper.
Oh, I apologize. I was, I'm, I'm actually working off the old agenda. I'm, thank you very much. So yes, that is old agenda 18, new agenda 9, page 19.
Correct.
And I would change the property tax credit up to 1,875 for married and 1,500 for single.
Point of information? Is there, on the, on the next page, is it tax relief for renters? Is there anything we need to?
No, the circuit breaker is just that, this first section right here.
Okay.
That says, that has the title saying homeowner aid for elderly and disabled.
Okay, and then that will ripple down through the other. Okay.
Do you have a second?
Second, Jones?
Okay, moved by Franco, seconded by Jones.
Could I just interject something? I think it might be a good idea for somebody to sit down and sort of draft up a more complete statement of what you're doing. For instance, I think it has to say that it's being increased by 50% because giving the maximum numbers doesn't, you know, alone, doesn't, doesn't specify that it's really an increase of 50% over and above what the qualifying statements are now. I mean, qualifying are the amounts are now. So, somebody might have $100 benefit, and now, and if they're a single person, it would go to 150. So, the 50% number is probably more important than the, the maximum numbers.
Agree.
They're both important.
Agree, and I believe that would be done in the resolution that will come to us at the town council meeting. But I'm just, as I stated, for a 50% increase, with, and I'm just trying to articulate what the maximums would be in this, in this section.
I'm not as familiar with procedures as you are, so I just wanted to make sure.
That's okay.
Okay, Counsel Bordeloff?
Thank you. This is the first draft coming before us, and so, in this condensed meeting, it really doesn't allow for the proper time to really calculate, even if you've read this thing five times. You know, really, this is the first time that I'm, you know, reading the draft over the last week, and having the chance to, you know, ask questions on it. I just, I personally don't feel comfortable moving anything without really doing some more research on top of this. There's other programs that were stated that were not researched. Is that correct?
Well, there's, we did, we did discuss quite a few of them. But we didn't discuss every, for instance, every single one that's provided in state statute, some of which Grattan does participate in, some of which it doesn't, because most of them are optional. But what we decided was that it made a lot, you know, there was no way we could do that all in 60 days. So that we decided that the best thing to do was to try to come up with something that we felt would be effective, would address some of the issues that were raised by town staff, with regard to administrative, the administration of the, of any new program, et cetera. So, it wasn't actually part of our mandate to go through every single possible program that's already under state law, because of what this statute does that we were operating under, was give us the authority to create something entirely new. But we looked at those other things to, just as examples of, well, what's out there? What, what kind of things are, could you, could, could we be, could we be thinking about doing within the constraints of the statute? For instance, the statute only, only allows us to give benefits to elderly and disabled. We couldn't go out and, you know, give a, suggest a benefit for some other group that, that didn't fall within those guidelines.
I guess my, my concern is, I would like to see all the programs that are offered by the state in the packet, and really pick apart everything if we're gonna go down that road. I think this is a great starting point, but I think to really make, for me, to make any decision on this, I think there needs to be more information. Also, clearly, you know, changing the number for a single and individual, I mean, are we, we're held to the threshold by the state, is that, is that true based on the income, based on this 2012-170? Is, are we held to that cap of income?
No, well, the mandated state program has that as its cap. However, the statute that we're operating under gives us the ability to create any kind of program we want. So all we're saying is, one way to do, you're really, I suppose technically, you have two different programs. One, that's the circuit breaker, and one that's exactly like the circuit breaker, it just adds the, to an additional amount that the person gets off their tax bill.
Right. But I guess it's also stated that, you know, we're looking at it as a way of making sure that we're limiting the burden on the, on the, on the town staff, which I can respect. But the document before me that I wanna see is what all could be available, and then we can talk about the limitations after. So I feel like we might be missing pieces if we're looking at it through a lens of how we're gonna, you know, roll it out because of our staffing. So I just feel like there's more here, because when I look at this, I look at a married couple at $46,400, but a single person at $38,100. That'd even double. So you're off, better off not being married, and each get your tax break for 38, if you add those together, you're, you're abating more taxes. This, this is, this seems broken to me. So if we follow this, and we just move a number, is that correct, that the, the max income for the program, and the threshold here says $46,400? Is that correct? Mary?
Right.
Okay, and then, and then for a single, single person, $38,000?
Correct.
Right. So to me, we're piecing this apart, removing numbers, which is great to cut down, but you're not changing the threshold of how much that person's only capable of making. The way this is written, you're not benefiting the married couple. It's, it's only benefit, it's much more beneficial to be single and be abated $38,100 than to be married, and only then they say, ah, ah, ah. Don't get married, because now you're $46,400 combined income. So, I, I just feel like there's a whole bunch of things, I think, we should look at.
But a married couple gets a higher benefit rate.
They go up by $250. Do you see the discrepancies there?
Well, I'm not sure there is one, but.
Yeah, so a married couple can then abate, they get a, they get a break of $1,250, and the individual gets only $1,000. Okay, but that still doesn't change the cost benefit. Like, I feel like we don't wanna look at just how much we're gonna, they get back, or they, they're able to get back. We really need to pick this apart. Instead of move this around, I really feel we need to look at all the statutes before us, and definitely, as a military community, we really need to bring in our veteran side of this. That's, that's our meat and potatoes here, you know, submarine capital of the world, and, you know, we, we are saying there were veteran options that the state could provide, but we don't have them in here. So, you, there's disabled veterans, fully disabled that are veterans, but there are veterans that aren't disabled that may benefit, that served our country, that might benefit from this. So I just, I would, I would urge the council that we move at a slower pace with this, and I think this is a great diving board, and I respect all the work. Like you said, you had 60 days. Maybe we send this back to the committee, expand the amount of time, and really vet and research all the programs, and allow us to kind of really look at that number. Because the one that screams out to me is if you had two older disabled people, don't get married. Because you're gonna lose, you're gonna lose mon, you're not gonna qualify.
You can't expand the time, because the statute itself provides that we can only have 60 days.
Right.
And we can't expand the beneficiaries, because the statute restricts the potential beneficiaries to elderly and disabled. So we couldn't, for instance, create a, a tax break for veterans. There are tax breaks out there for veterans in the statutes, but under what we were tasked to do, we can't provide that they would be eligible for a tax break under this particular statute.
And so what I'm saying is, maybe the way this referral went forward, it maybe its intention was great, but after further research, sometimes we have to pull back the lens and relook at it, and we realize there might be other approaches. So this is a great diving board, but there are other tax abatements out there that we're just bypassing, because it didn't say in this particular referral. But there are maybe, you know, veteran options for military, there are options to change numbers. So I just, I think this is a great starting point, and there's no urgency at this moment. I think we should recalibrate, and if we're gonna put something through, put something through that's strong, and that we do the research on the other end. So I think this is a great start for the, the sections that we did research, but I really think there's more to the pot. And I guess my question for Mary, how many other programs would you say there are?
Could you restate that, please? You're coming through a little muffled.
Sure. How many, how many other programs would you say that there are?
Well, back when Dr. Zepuri proposed this, we provided a matrix to the council that laid out all the other programs.
Is there a way we can refurbish that? Because it's new council now, so I think we should probably, it would be like pertinent to this, this topic, to have that in here.
I also wanna remind you that Grattan has a local option veteran benefit, and for the 2020 grant list, we administered $930,000 worth of additional assessment reduction for the local option veteran program. So we, we are administering the programs that Grattan has already adopted that are local options.
Thank you. Counselor's time has expired. Mary, I'd just like to ask you a couple of questions, just because from my understanding of, I, I watched the, the committee meetings, and right at the beginning, you guys all sort of figured out that we did this the wrong, in the wrong order. And, and I think if we are gonna send this back in any way, I think we have to do it in the way that it was meant to be set up. So, it would be where the council comes up with a tax abatement program, then we set up the group and say, this is the program we wanna pass, how much is this gonna cost us? How's, how much is it gonna cost a town, and, and what's sort of the ramifications of this? It can't, it can't sort of be a, a thing where we go back and say, hey, what do you guys think we should do? We've already done that, and, and actually weren't, we weren't supposed to. So, am, am I understanding that correctly? And also, is it, is this 12-129N? This is limited only to seniors and disabled, or is there veterans in there too? Because from my understanding, it was just seniors, disabled, but there's veterans in our, in our title here.
Yes, and 12129N, I believe, is only limited to seniors and disabled, and yes, the process really, according to the statute, it said the town council studies what program they want to choose. They give it to the committee. The committee has 60 days to report back on what the results of that suggested program would be, as John has already said. I agree with that.
Okay, so we can't, veterans are not included under this. Also, we cannot expand the 60 days. That's part of the statute as well, and, and if we bring this back, it's gonna have to be a thing where the council comes with a, or a proposal, we hand it to the group, and they study what the tax ramifications of that would be.
I think, I mean, just to.
Yeah, I, I agree with that interpretation.
Okay. I think technically, maybe you'd have to create a new committee.
Right.
But probably the members of the whole committee would be willing to serve again.
I think you're correct. Okay. Counsel Westerville?
Thank you very much. As I read through this, there were a few things that stuck, you know, struck out at me. One statement being the fiscal impact on the town in the form of reduced tax revenue if we increase any tax abatements. Additionally, Grattan already provides a significant, a significant number of tax relief programs to its residents. And then, one recent comment was that, I don't think this is being done out of any widespread community complaint that there's something wrong. So I'm not really sure that we, as a town council, being responsible to all the taxpayers. I understand the circuit breaker listed 246, but the town of Grattan has a lot more taxpayers than that, and I don't think that we need to burden them. What I'm hearing tonight is, this program's not broken, so I'm not sure what we're gonna fix. So I would like to make a motion that we put forth 0% for an increase in the tax abatement, because I think it is unnecessary.
Okay. So a motion can't cancel out a previous motion?
Can I move a different percentage and just say 0?
No.
If the first motion fails, the result will be 0.
Will be, yeah.
So there's really no need for another motion.
Right. You just, people, if they want 0, they'll just vote no on 50, essentially.
Okay, thank you. I withdraw then.
Okay. Counsel Parker, was that a hand?
No, thank you. Mary answered the question.
Okay.
All right, well, I, let me rephrase that. So, yeah, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So the pages that would be seen on the back end of the report are what the town of Grattan already provides for the elderly, the disabled, and veterans, correct?
Page 19, 20, 21.
Would you say on the back pages, which pages are those? Are you talking about the committee report?
Well, it's just the town brought in the property tax and rent relief for the elderly, the disabled.
Right.
Would be like pages 18 through?
Right. There's a new packet. It's, it's pages 19, 20, and 21.
But the old packet 18.
Correct, but I don't have that new packet.
Right. Right. 18 and 20 in the old, 19 to 21 in the new.
The original packet, yes. I, I have the other one online, and I can go back at the same time when I'm on the phone.
So I, I guess I can answer this question, and yes, those are the programs that we currently administer in this office.
Okay. So basically, we're already doing something, and I, I see where Counsel Franco was going for an increase on that. It would just be, would only be for the elderly, disabled, and the back page, or the very last page, would be for veterans that are already receiving tax benefits or relief at this point. So we're already giving everybody as much as we can. We're just trying to make sure additionally, to give them a little bit extra.
That's what the, the motion would do, correct? On just the first program, the circuit breaker program?
Correct. So all we're looking at is if we're doing the circuit breaker program, and increasing for the elderly and the disabled tax relief. Since times are hard, and inflation has increased, they're probably not getting as much as they should be getting, because I don't believe they're, once their social security benefits increase, then they have to pay extra in rent. So they're not getting a relief anywhere, or to have anything else that they're trying to pay out. Food-wise, they have difficulties all around. So if we can get some assistance, additional assistance to our citizens or residents, it will be greatly appreciated on their end. I understand that not everybody's gonna get it, but for veterans, they'll be getting stuff. So we're gonna take the best, in my mind, the veterans, out of this conversation, and the elderly and disabled. And I'm just saying, I'm in support of what Counsel Franco brought forward, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Franco?
Thank you. I, I heard somebody say, nobody is calling out for an increase in this program. I will, I will let you know that this program is, and this is before us, because there was large increase, emails, and people contacting us as a council back then, a year ago. I also recall when I voted on this to go forward, when Counselors Zepuri brought this forward, I was in favor of it. And when I voted on it a year ago, it was very clear to me that we were asking the committee to make a recommendation to us. We were not asking the committee to, for us to give our opinion to the committee. It was very clear to me that we asked the committee to come with a recommendation to us, whether there was even gonna be an increase, or there wasn't, or if they even thought this was a good idea or not. It was very clear to me, and that's how I voted, and why I was voting, so that it would be a clean, clear committee idea and thoughts on a representation from our community. It was also, as noted in our packet, that was back in July 16th of 2021. It has taken us almost a year to find people to volunteer for this committee. When I can recall being out knocking on doors, talking to people, asking them, when I brought this up, when they would talk to me about taxes, and how it was difficult it was being a senior and paying their taxes on a fixed income, I would ask them to please join this committee, and to please contact, you know, the town clerk, and how long it took us to get a com- And how long it took us to get a committee to even come together to discuss this topic. But I will tell you, it was quite clear to me what we were asking your committee to do. Even though maybe it says something different in the statute of how it was supposed to be presented, it was clear to me what I was asking from your committee, and I think you've fulfilled what you were doing.
It was clear to the committee what you had, you were asking us to do.
Yeah.
It's only halfway between, you know, like, second and third meeting, when I really looked at the statute, that I realized that it probably was supposed to be done in a different way.
It probably could have been done by state statutes, or however they're asking. But as a council, we wanted a committee to come to us with a recommendation. We didn't want to put our opinion in to taint the pool, I guess you would say. So there are numerous, numerous seniors and disabled in our community who are struggling on fixed incomes. There is a huge population that has discussed this with me, who has sent us numerous emails. And if they're watching tonight, 'cause they like to watch this program, by all means, send us an email. Tell us what you think. But I think right now, what was recommended to us as a potential for an increase, that would have a very minimal impact on our community collection of taxes of $64,000, when our budget is, how much? Hundred, yeah, 130 million, I think 64,000, to help our senior and disabled people that are in a very fixed, limited income of a maximum of like $46,000 for married couples. I mean, that, that's not an easy life. I mean, to be senior and with all your medications and your doctor's appointments and everything else in your life, that $46,000, on top of potentially paying a mortgage and your taxes and transportation and everything else. It's, it's something that I think, to keep them in our community, that a very meager increase of 600 and change to help them out a year, or $500, is, I think, very minimal of what we can do to help these people. So I would hope that our council will pass this tonight. And if they want to bring forward something different for any other group, that could be a different topic. But let's help the people that need it the most, and why this was brought to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Portelon?
So my question is, the cap, I guess, for Mary, can those numbers be moved?
I believe they can, yes.
Right, 'cause I mean-
I've seen it in other towns.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, we talked about the number, and what are those numbers, just for clarification? What are we moving, those two numbers, for individual and married?
For a single person, $38,100.
No, the, the motion on the floor, the amended from Councilor, what was the numbers that she changed?
Those caps would stay the same.
And the other numbers are?
1875 and 1500.
It's a 50% increase.
1875 for married?
Yep.
And 1500 for single?
Right.
So, right now, we're identifying it only affects 200 and something, that we know of 240. How long have these numbers been sitting here like this, at 46,460 and 38,100? Do you know, Mary?
They go up every year with the social security cost of living adjustment. They come down from the Office of Policy and Management. They issue a new chart every year.
All right. And the council can make a change or adjustment to that, you're stating?
We have to look at the statutes to see what the enabling legislation says, but I believe you can set your own program and have your own income limits, yes.
Mary, I, just to clarify, the additional program we're suggesting, we could have whatever limits we want. But I think the basic circuit breaker, isn't that set by statute? So that-
Yes.
You'd have two different programs with two different income limits, if you, if you were to make a different income limit for this program, correct? You'd have-
We're saying the same thing, yes.
And, and so, if we're sticking under this circuit breaker program, we can move the top numbers?
Not for-
You can adopt a local option program, and you can, I believe, I have to look at the statutes, Porsha.
So my, I just want to clarify, so, Councilor, I just want to make sure my notes are correct. So Councilor Franco's is creating a new option? I just want to make sure, Mayor.
It's an expansion of the current program.
So it'd be a new program? It wouldn't be this one, they'd be creating their own?
Yeah.
That's what our new motion on the floor is?
Technically, yes. Technically, yes.
Is that the way I'm understanding it?
It's an additional 50% on top of what you're reading here in this section for homeowners, for elderly and disabled. It's an additional 50%.
Right. So we'd be coming out of this, like, statute, we'd be creating our own program?
On top of.
Right, through, through 12-129N.
And when you say on top of, we're, we're not using these same monthly, these 1,250 and 1,000 on top of that number. This is replacing, correct?
It's, it's, the 1875 and the 1500 is representation of the maximum that can be utilized.
Okay. So, for instance, just to clarify-
Yeah.
That would mean that under the circuit breaker program, the maximum you could get is 1,250, and then under this new program, you get an additional 675, and that would add up to 1875.
Okay. And under Counselor Franco's motion, it's not changing the max out of pocket, the max that you can earn, correct? Is that the motion on the floor?
Right. This would not be expanded to someone, married couple making $50,000.
Right. But under the motion that's on the floor, we're creating a chance that we could move those under our own program, in addition, as we're doing with the other numbers.
And under Mary's opinion, which is the only opinion that I think matters, is yes, we could do that.
Hmm. I mean, I guess, for Mary, do you think these numbers are reflective, I mean, of the community at large?
I have no way to know what the community at large is, Porsha. I have no way to gauge what people's income is, and what their ability to pay is, or, you know, we, we don't have access to everybody's income tax returns. So I don't know. I only know the people that walk into the counter.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the numbers more in the sense that, being married, you don't get much of a tax break, but if you're single, the numbers, so I would think if we're gonna move the top number, then, I was trying to think of a fair way to close that gap, so that the tax, you know, threshold for the income is fairly representative of a married couple.
Point of information?
What's your point of information?
This is on a scale, though, correct? So the higher you get to the maximum, the lower the benefit, is that correct?
That's right.
Correct.
Thank you.
And what my-
If, if the married couple is getting $46,400 a year, they're going to get less of a, of a tax reduction-
They won't get the maximum.
They will not get the maximum. The maximum is for people that are down, I believe, down somewhere around 26. And, you know, if you had different income limits for this new program, it, you'd have to come up with a completely different schedule of benefits, because you'd have to scale it differently than the underlying circuit breaker program. Because the underlying circuit breaker program, you can't raise the maximum amount of income.
Well, what I was just looking at is, like, for example, at $38,100 for a single, if the married went up to like 55,000 even, it's gonna open up the door for more people to possibly qualify. They might not qualify for the max, but at this point, when you're only making 55,000 as a, as a married couple, anything helps. So maybe they won't qualify for the new number of 1,800, but they might qualify for 1,000, or maybe 500, before they weren't even, even looked at in the program.
Well, except they wouldn't qualify for anything under the-
I'm just more looking at the program as trying to make that number, married versus single, look more reflective of a true reflection. That's what I was thinking. So since we're changing the numbers and creating our own new program, it would be, would make sense to look at that, to kind of, Groton can be unique in the sense to, you know, not penalize the married couple, you know, and allow for those joint incomes to be reflective. Because if you add the single salary times 2, it's way more than what it would be if you're married. And so I was just trying to, to take $38,100 and times that by 2, you're getting a much greater number than 46,000.
I, I think the thinking is that it's not twice as expensive for a married couple as it is for a single person. For instance, the rent is gonna be the same, or the mortgage is gonna be the same, whether you're single or married. So that there, that's probably the thinking behind that. But in any event, if you decide to increase those numbers for this program, it would mean that the administrative, they have administrative issues, because you'd be administering one program with one set of, of income limits, and another with another set. So you'd have to come up with completely, you know, a far more complex system of figuring out what the benefits would be under the new program.
Right. And I, I personally think we should. I truly think, you know, you might be under the same roof, but, you know, there's a lot of people who are disabled and elderly, that one, one of the, the married couples might have significant medical expenses. And that will draw down, so just because you're sharing the same roof and saving there, you're, you're paying a lot for prescription drugs and healthcare because you're disabled, or, I just, I just think that number should look a little bit more-
So are single people.
Yeah. I just think that should look a little bit more reflective, was just something I had thought.
Mayor Burt?
All right, I would just caution on changing the salary ranges, just because we can't predict, until you do further study, we can't predict what the impact would be. Whatever we don't pull in, we target everyone else. So I think it's hard to pass a tax increase without knowing what it is. So I would just caution on that. If you're looking at something like that, slow it down, or do it tonight.
Well, I mean, and that's the thing, I think we have something before us, that we can raise one number and do nothing else. So it seems like we're not ready. We should be able to talk about the whole document, all the numbers and salaries, and not say, nope, nope, we can't do that, because we don't have the staffing. The plan is to look at what's the best program for the town of Groton, and then worry about the other things after. And so if we're saying we only can move one piece of this document, but we can't touch the rest, I just don't think we're doing our, I personally don't feel I'm, I'm voting on something that's a fully complete. I feel like we need more time, more community input. I think we should be revisiting all those documents that Mary sent out, since we have new councilors up here, all the other programs that could be adopted, that Connecticut has available. I mean, this is a good time to review all of that. That's just, I, I just think we need more time. This is the first draft that had come before us. I'm not saying I can't agree with Counselor Franco's numbers, I think they're great, you know, put some more money back in some people's pockets, but I just really want to take the time to go through all of it. And that we have not done yet, and I appreciate this committee for bringing forth your first draft, but we, we just, we're just reviewing it for the public. And the public's hearing this for the first time, as was stated, the people who watch this are probably watching this, and the next public comments, not until the next meeting. So tonight, based on what's talked, we, we won't have any emails until after this. And I really do think the community's input is so important in this, to hear the people that it's directly affecting.
Thank you. Councilor's time has expired.
And we don't have those comments here. Thank you.
Councilor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm understanding these three pages, I think, a little bit more. So the programs-
Point of order.
What's your point of order?
It's a side discussion going on during a meeting.
Councilor Jones, you have the floor.
Thank you. So I'm just, I think I'm understanding these three pieces of the paper. So these, there's the homeowner and elderly disabled, which is one of the programs we have, which is also called the circuit breaker program.
Right.
And then there's another program that we have, called the property tax exemption for blind and disabled people. And, just tell me if I'm doing this right, and there's a third one called property tax exemption for totally disabled, a fourth one, tax relief for renters, and then there's a veterans one. Is that-
You'd have to ask Mary whether those are all in effect. I mean, I, somewhere in all of these documents I have, I have a list of what we, what we currently have.
So is, so Mary, are these, are these the five programs that Groton accesses now, out of sort of that 20 or 30 that's sort of floating out there?
I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about my three pages. You're talking about the three pages that are in the, in your agenda?
Yeah, yeah, the one that's-
Okay, I believe that's what they are, is that what we have at current time.
These are the, these are the current programs that we offer to residents for tax relief. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And in the big universe of programs, there's 20 or 30 programs, but these are the five. We just use these five.
Right. There are, there were lots of other optional programs that the state statutes permit, and they're, they're spelled out in the, in those particular statutes, the, the form and nature of the, of the possible abatements are spelled out rather explicitly. What 12-129 does is it allows you to fashion your own.
So it, so 12-129 allows you to go in and look at the programs you have, and sort of take one of those programs and sort of increase the benefits?
Well, that's one possibility, but you could come up with something completely different. You could, you know, you, you don't have to base it on any existing program whatsoever. The reason that we did, we based it on an existing program is because that existing program, to our minds, already addressed the people who needed it the most. And by simply increasing the amount that was available for the people who qualified for that program, it made the administrative issues almost nil.
Go away. So you kind of looked at what we had and said-
Right.
-this one sort of fits the best, was the easiest one for us to work with, and your recommendation was the 50% was a good number to use on this particular circuit breaker program?
It was our recommendation, but again, you could take any percentage you want.
Right. But that was the number you did, and you applied it to this program. You could have applied it to tax relief for renters if you had felt like it, but you just-
I'm not sure, because I'd have to look at the statute. I think it, I think the tax break has to be restricted to somebody who is, they have to be a tax break, a taxpayer.
Okay. So it's just, I just picked that out, I picked that one out of the air, but it could've been any one of these that you just said this is the case.
Well, we couldn't have, for instance, if there's one for veterans, we couldn't have, of, we couldn't have increased that, because we're not, because veterans are not as part of the, we can only address-
It's not part of that new deal.
Disabled and elderly. That's all we can address under the statute.
So you look for programs that just address disabled and elderly?
And that's why the circuit breaker was perfect. It already addressed the population that we're allowed to address.
Okay. And your recommendation was 50%?
Right.
So it's on that? Okay. So that's, okay. So now I'm understanding a little bit better what all of this, what's going on here. Okay. Okay, all right. That's good. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Kessir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Burt, if Counselor Franco's motion is passed tonight, can you just give us a synopsis of what happens from here?
Excuse me, could you say it again?
If Counselor Franco's motion passes tonight, can you just give us a synopsis of what happens from here?
Well, obviously, at the next available cycle, we would make the change and advertise it. I mean, this one's pretty straightforward. In terms of, my bigger concern is if you change the parameters, because we just don't have a way to calculate it. If you're ever gonna change parameters, you would want to tweak it slightly, so that you can see the impact, you keep moving it as you go. So if the council was gonna do anything, I would recommend something like this.
Okay. But a resolution would just change the initial progress?
It'd just be a resolution, yeah. Yeah, it'd just be a resolution, yeah.
Okay, great. And, and thank you for bringing up the point about raising the minimum incomes, because I, I brought up when I first spoke about how the report highlighted two really important things, and that's burden to the taxpayer, and it's also a burden on staff. And raising minimum incomes, we have no idea what that's gonna do for the taxpayer, but also ultimately, it is going to burden our town staff. Mary, I have no idea if you're gonna be able to answer this question for me, I brought it up the first time I spoke. Is there any way to get a breakdown of age groups of taxpayers?
We, we don't know. We don't have access to that data.
Okay, great. That's all I needed to know. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilor Westerville?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just as a point of clarification first, we're looking at the 246 circuit breaker accounts in Groton, and the numbers we have here are from 2020. So if we were to project what the 2021 assessment and the values of the homes are gonna be, we can expect that number would be greater than $200,000 at that point, I would imagine.
$200,000.
Yes, I think that, I think, what this basically illustrates is what it would be, what we know, you know, what, you know, what, how it would affect what's, what the situation is at, at the current time. The numbers will probably be different year to year. Mary?
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
We- We just recently filed a 21 report to the state. Even though the state doesn't reimburse towns anymore, we're still required to report these numbers to them. And the total number of applicants for this year's report was 237 applicants who received the benefit. The total benefit is $124,320. And 50% of that is $62,100. And I rounded it, so $180. So even though we just did a revaluation and values shifted, these numbers didn't change that much. The end result of them benefiting from the program didn't change that much from last year prior to the revale to this year after the revale.
Okay, thank you. The other thing I would like to say is absolutely no disrespect to seniors at all. I believe we have a large number of young people in the town who probably fall below those, those salary levels that we're talking about for seniors. And they are going to also bear the burden of any increase that we put on them by passing any type of tax abatement. So I think that's unfair to the, some of our lower income members of our community. So that's my reason, or one of my reasons for opposing any increase in the tax abatement. Thank you.
Counsel Baumgartner?
Yes, I do want to state on the record, I do support expanding our tax, our Circuit Breaker Program. I would agree, though, that this is a pretty substantive document. Typically, when we get our agendas, it does include something to the effect of a recommended motion. And just to, you know, for the purposes of transparency, that was not included in this agenda item. And that's usually a ticker for deciding, you know, whether there's going to be movement or action on this item. So with that, you know, I, I do think in the next couple of weeks, we can, to our due diligence, I will note, we have two other items on the agenda this evening. So with that, I'll make a motion to postpone this agenda item to our next COW, which will be Tuesday, August 9th.
I'll second that.
Hold on. Okay, I got them.
Point of information?
What's your point of information?
I believe Tuesday night will not, we will not be having a meeting. I believe it's August 8th unless we moved it because of the primary.
Yeah, because of the primary.
Oh, that's right. Good catch, Counsel Parker. So it'd be the day before or, or after?
It'd be Monday.
Monday? All right. So if, if we can move this item to, or postpone this item to Monday, August 8th?
I still would second that.
Okay. I'm just trying to, okay. Motion to postpone is debatable. So I've got a motion by Baumgartner, seconded by Borlon, to postpone. Would you like to speak to your motion?
I, I think I did already, but, and it, it's in no way, you know, a vote against the, you know, expanding a Circuit Breaker Program. But I, I do think we all could benefit from continuing to read the study. Very much appreciate Chair Rizbiki's report. And would also like to do a little bit more fact finding on some of the other programs that, you know, the committee researched as well. But, you know, simply, if we were to put it up for a vote tonight, you know, I, I actually do believe that we should not necessarily wait for a resolution to determine kind of, you know, the details of the program. I'd like to see that when we voted out of COW. And I think this next couple of weeks will allow for that. And at least the work from, from town staff, as Manager Burt indicated. So nothing further.
Okay, thank you. And I would just ask the council, let's please not have, you know, we got two other things, it's 9:30. Let's not have 30 minutes of debate on whether we should postpone the vote. Let's just vote whether we should postpone and then move on. Counsel Borlon?
Thanks for that. I can support Counselor Baumgartner's decision. I do think there, there was no motion prepared for this. And I think it also allows the community to be involved. There'll be a public comment before that date. So folks that are watching, that are really interested in this item can come out. And I think it allows for more research. And also, if Mary could send us, for all the new councilors, the, all the programs that are, are out there that Groton could adopt as well. I think it's important information. So I think it's good to slow down, reassess, and look at it over. Thank you.
Okay. No further discussion. A call for a vote on postponing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So I got Baumgartner, Borlon. Is that Westerville?
No.
Nope. Jones? Okay. McBride, were you in favor?
Yes.
McBride. Okay, opposed?
Aye.
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 Franco, Westerville. Parker, are you opposed? Abstaining. Parker, Melendez will be against. Why do I have eight?
You wouldn't have written down.
We had one abstention.
Seven, eight, yeah. I have, I have eight with the abstention. Who's against? Franco, Westerville, Melendez?
Casiri.
Casiri. That's, okay. So this fails. Four in favor, four opposed, one abstaining. So it is not postponed. Okay. Back to the main motion on the floor with Counsel Franco's. Counsel McBride?
Just a quick question for Mary. You provided detail that there was 930,000 of veterans exemptions. Do you have that same number for the other three categories? The disabled, the tax relief renters, and the blind who are totally disabled? Just so we can know what the town-
I do.
Thank you.
I can send that along with the information when I send it to Lisa to distribute to the councilors if you'd like. Or I can tell you now.
If you could, because I'm interested in the, the total amount for the disabled persons because this is in addition to the one we're looking at tonight.
So for disabled, the total assessed reduction is 35,000. The total tax loss is $910,000. The basic veterans, which is mandated by state statute, is 137,000. Tax loss is 3,560. We break down the local veteran. As I said, the local option veterans, 930,000. That's 24,160. We have another program, which is an additional veterans, not based on income. The assessment reduction is $229,000, $5,950. And that's for the 2020 grant list. What we can do is update that for the 2021 grant list. But because the mill rate dropped, the numbers might be a little lower.
Okay. I guess what I'm trying to figure out, I missed one number, is what percentage is this $64,000 increase of the total that we're currently exempting? Because if you, it seems, that seems pretty large, considering one's 24,000, one's 3,500, one's 6,000. Is that correct? So the Circuit Breaker is by far the largest, the Circuit Breaker is by far the largest one. You're offering currently 128,000, right?
Correct.
And then the other exemptions were 24,000, 3,500, 6,000. I think I missed one other one?
910?
910.
910. So 24, 28, 35, 36,000, plus the 128, call it, 130, 165 is what your total exemptions are, somewhere in that vicinity?
Does that sound so right?
So just so we're on the same page, we're, if we approve this tonight, we're approving $65,000 increase on a number that's only 165,000. So I don't think I can support that because that's a pretty sizable increase. That's, I can't, I mean, what is that, 60? That's over 30% increase in the, in the tax exemptions for what is a limited discussion this evening. So I will not be supporting that. Not that I don't support it, but I don't support it without additional due diligence. Thank you.
Okay. Counsel Franco?
I just have a point of clarification. Mary, the increase you're saying is about 62,000 this year. Out of all the taxes that we collect throughout the whole town of Groton, about what is, $130 million? What percentage is that?
Okay. 64,000? You want to do just the 64 or the?
Well, 62 was the last one, right? The most recent is 62,180.
And what, tell me again what you think the amount is that they're collecting taxes? I think-
100. What is our budget?
I think it's 90 million we collect. We don't collect-
Because you have grants.
All right, 90 million?
You have grants.
It's like six one thousandths of a percent?
Okay.
Does that sound right, Mr. McBride?
I'm sorry. I wasn't doing that calculation. I was doing it based on 65 and 165. And just to add additional comment, I-
I have the floor, thank you.
Come right ahead.
So it's actually, compared to what we collect from our community, this is very miniscule. To help people who are really struggling, who are disabled and seniors. So if we're going to sit there with a calculator and sit there and say, $625 for a whole year to help you with your taxes is a huge, giant amount. That's 60, that equates to $62,000 last, this past year. I think that's an issue. That, I think having a little empathy on people that are struggling to make ends meet, to be able to stay in our community and not move south, sometimes I think it's just not quite the, the right way of thinking. Thank you.
Counsel Borlon?
I can understand what Counselor McBride is stating. And I think he's expressing it very professionally and, you know-
Point of order.
Articulating it in a way that-
Sorry. What's your point of order?
Motive.
There's a motive there. I just, I have a right to compliment him on how he's speaking.
Counsel Borlon, you have the floor.
Thank you. Okay. Thought that would be, again, I thought he articulated very wonderfully. And he works in finance. And I felt the same, I'm sorry?
Counsel Borlon, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you. That it's not a matter of helping out our vulnerable population. I scream from the rafters supporting that population on a daily basis. That is big and near and dear to me. I do think we have to be fiscally responsible. And we have not had enough time tonight to really vet this before us. And that's what I heard Counselor McBride say. That's what I was trying to say. I'm, and I believe by the postponement of, of Counselor Baumgartner, it's not that we don't want to give the number. We just don't have the time here tonight, under the first read, to do the work that needs to be done, to really make sure this is a solid decision, document, and the input from the community. So I just urge the council, again, slow down. Let's move on to the next agenda items. And let's move this to another date where we have a chance to have community input. And I agree with Counselor Franco. It's great to help out the people most vulnerable, absolutely. But we don't want to do it in a rushed manner without the time. And we, we don't have the time right now. And this is the first read, first presentation, first dialogue. It's great. It seems like we have a lot of ideas. But I think we need to, to really dive in a little bit more. And we cannot do that here today. A motion was not prepared for this. And I, if I do not support this tonight, it's not because I do not want to help the most vulnerable. It's because we have not the proper platform and time here and public input to do the work that we need to. And so I would be voting it down because I feel it's rushed. And I feel like we need more time to, point of order?
What's your point of order?
Counselors are laughing at other councilors.
Counsel Borlon, you have the floor.
Did you, are you ruling in my favor? Oh, no.
There's no ruling.
Imagine.
You have the floor.
Thank you. We don't have enough time to do that, to make a decision like that. And I feel we should allow for that time, move on. As it was, the, the agenda was amended at the very last minute to add on another item, which was wonderful. But folks are trying to get to the other items and it's stacked. And we just found out, I mean, we get these packets on Thursday night at the earliest. And we've been reading through this. And I know for myself, I want to put the full work into it. And we need the time. Thank you.
Counsel Parker?
A couple of things. The motion was, did not carry out. And I'm going to move the question.
Okay. I got a motion by Counsel Parker to move the question. Second?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Franco. Motion to move the question is not debatable, so we will be voting. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
No. No.
I have Baumgartner, Borlon, Westerville abstaining. Okay. So that carries six in favor, three opposed, and zero abstaining. And I believe that required two thirds of a vote. Six is two thirds of nine. So we'll be voting on Counsel Franco's original motion, which is to pass what is written here in the recommended, recommendation of the committee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. I got Franco, Jones, Casiri, Melendez. Any others?
Baumgartner.
Baumgartner. Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Westerville, McBride, Borlon abstaining?
No, Parker was a, yes.
Okay. Carry six in favor, three opposed, Westerville, McBride, Borlon, zero abstaining. Thank you, thank you Chair Rizbiki for being here.
Thank you. Can we just take a five?
No, no break.
No, I would like to take a break.
No, 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 no.
We'll do a five-minute break. 9:45. Nine forty-five. Back to recess at nine forty-nine. Onto Complete Streets Policy, page twenty-two. I make a motion to recommend adoption of a complete streets policy, so moved.
Second, Board along.
By Melendez, seconded by Board along. We have Director Berry here for some background. Welcome.
Good evening. Good evening, Mark Berry, Director of Parks and Recreation. With me here is Brian Kent from Kenton Frost, and Greg Hanover, the Director of Public Works. We have been meeting probably for the last six weeks or so. How long? Four meetings over, actually, it's probably the last two months or so. Also on those meetings was Deb Jones from the Planning Department, and a representative from Legislite Health District. And we've been working on developing this complete streets policy, and at this time, I'd actually like to turn it over to Brian Kent, because he's been kind of spearheading this entire initiative.
And before, before we do that, if I can make a point of personal privilege, you know, I, because I did want to make a motion to do this, in large part because it was my referral. But nonetheless, I, before I turn it over to Mr. Kent, I did ask Mr. Kent to participate just for the council's awareness. Sir, as Chair of the Complete Streets Committee, and convened an outstanding group of volunteers. And so before we turn it over to you folks, just want to thank you all for your participation. We do have Brian Kent here, as well as, who represented Bike Groton in his capacity as President, and was really instrumental, and really the driving force in our group in crafting language for our committee to consider. And also, Tom Olson, a member of the Conservation Commission, who was able to join us. Also want to recognize Patrice Kornatoski, our former mayor, who is very active and engaged on our committee, as well as RTM members, Sma Eben, and Jen Serf. Thank you both so much for your participation. And most importantly, our incredible town staff, who attended virtually every meeting, you know, starting with our phenomenal Public Works Director, Greg Hanover, the illustrious, I hope that was the right word, or the extravagant, director of Parks and Recreation, Mark Berry, and our Assistant Planning Director, Deb Jones. What you'll find is that their participation from the onset paid dividends, because we could not move forward with a document without the folks who will actually be tasked with implementing this document, having them at the table and participating, and really giving their endorsement and seal of approval. And so, thank you all, and with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Kent.
Thank you, Councilor Baumgartner, and thank you to the council for considering this initiative. I'd like to start by saying that the, the name of this policy is Complete Streets, and would like for you to, to hear that it really transcends the traditional approach to streets, to the design, construction, and maintenance of our streets. It's much more comprehensive, it's much more inclusive of the community at large, and it really transcends traditional public works activities. And I'm just going to briefly summarize what it does include. Its, its principal objective is to increase the safety of the public ways in the community. And it's not just for pedestrians and cyclists, it's for people operating all manners of vehicles, but it's especially for those that are referred to in transportation speak as the vulnerable users. And those are you and I, our families, our parents, our children, when we are walking or biking, or, or, or just out in the public way. And these public ways, realize, are the largest amount of property that a municipality owns. So our right-of-way's compose more land than any other holding that this town possesses, and it's where the community interacts with the public space on a daily basis, more than any other part of the community. We take it for granted, but it's a fact. That is where we have more interactions, more social interactions, and unfortunately, more dangerous interactions. And since safety is the first priority, we need to understand the safety of folks that I've just described has become more and more perilous in the last several years. You all have heard about the, the increase in speeding and accidents and driving behavior, but it has been far worse for people who are walking and biking along the roadways. They are disproportionately affected by, by crash encounters with vehicles, and they're more likely to die or be seriously injured in these encounters, and vehicle speed is one of the principal problems. So, Complete Streets endeavors through a variety of techniques and approaches to reduce speeds and to make the streets safer. It also increases the distribution of transportation activities in a more equitable way across the community. So by adopting this policy, it influences the way that all the departments look at prioritizing improvements and ensuring that, that these improvements are applied in places where they are actually needed most, not just where there's, there's more preference or influence or, 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 or income or affluence. As, as Councilor Baumgartner mentioned, we had participation from Legislite Health District. The district is a strong proponent of this kind of initiative, because by giving people more options for mobility, it improves the conditions for walking, biking, and the health benefits that go with it. It's especially valuable for people with disabilities, elderly, youth, folks that don't drive because they can't or they choose not to, students on their ways to school. You've all heard of safe routes to school programs. I've worked with Portland, Connecticut on a complete streets program, and that's where they applied their complete streets activities first and foremost. Another town I've worked with, South Windsor, they completed several projects around their schools, they were able to attract funding for those programs. I think in an earlier discussion tonight, the, the question of how to keep seniors in our community was brought up, and by improving options for, for mobility besides owning a vehicle, the residents of our town will be able to age in place and stay in their, their homes more easily, because they won't be required to drive to the grocery store, or to drive to Town Hall, or to other places, if they can safely walk there instead. And that's where we're aiming with this. Also, a complete streets policy enhances our town's position and ability and standing in receiving funding for these types of projects. When placing grant applications, having this kind of policy is a, is a benefit. This type of endeavor will attract economic development to the town, it will attract investment and improvement in our, in our, by, excuse me, by investing and improving our public ways, we will foster community pride, and will attract more favorable development. Also tonight, there was discussion about the beautification efforts in the town, and how beneficial that has been, and how, how it has paid dividends in more ways than just putting in landscaping. Landscaping is part of complete streets, and improving these public ways, like I said, where we interact with our, with our community more than anywhere else, we also send a message that this is a great place to live and to invest. I've worked with folks in New Britain, a historically distressed community in Connecticut. New Britain has been working on complete street improvements for the past ten years. They have been able to attract over forty million dollars in grants that have gone straight into these programs. And in the last couple of years, they've seen private investment in their downtown areas in previously vacant or, or derelict, underutilized buildings by developers who see the city is making progress, and they want to be part of it. So just improving your public face will improve the private space. Lastly, this type of policy helps improve interdepartment coordination. One of the RTM members that, 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 or the Councilor Baumgartner mentioned, sent me a private email saying that in her years and years of participating in town government, she's never seen a, a project or initiative where town departments and, and stakeholders produce something as, as impressive as this project. So Department of Public Works, its focus is roadways, utility infrastructure, parks and rec. Its parks, trails, programming, they will be, Parks and Rec will be initiating a community connectivity plan to look at the overall town network of bicycle, pedestrian, trails, et cetera. Planning and development is concerned with land use regulations, new developments, site plan applications. This policy helps to put everybody together in a way that they can cross-communicate and make sure that they're all on the same page, and that programs that could be funded through one stream of funding are available for other activities, departments, that they might not otherwise be aware of. It also ensures that the town is coordinating with the Connecticut Department of Transportation, which as you know, owns and controls many of the principal roadways through the town of Groton. I serve on the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Board for the State of Connecticut, so I meet with DOT staff, and the entire constellation of transportation advocates, professionals, community leaders on a monthly basis, and what we hear from DOT is towns that have complete streets policies and are working to improve their streets are more likely to see their state routes receive the same kind of attention, because DOT is cautious about proposing complete street improvements in towns that don't have such policies, because they have been turned back. They have made recommendations, they have invested in, in designs and projects, and in some communities, their, the response has been, no thanks, we don't, we don't want that, we don't do that here, or we don't understand it. So if Groton adopts a complete streets policy, and DOT is interested in making improvements to Route One, or 117, or any of the other roads, they will be much more confident and comfortable moving forward, knowing that the town is, is on the same page. So you have the, the draft policy, I'm not going to go through it, it's, it's fairly detailed, but I will say that it comes from a template of policies that have been written in communities across the country, in the state of Connecticut. We've done a lot of homework, we've, we've looked at the, the basic structure of a complete streets policy, we start with that, and then we build in, we have built in the specific requirements and the specific conditions that deal with Groton. So we, we say this does not apply to the city, that's clear, does not apply to the subdivisions like Noank and, and Groton Long Point that have their own zoning, but we encourage them to consider it, we encourage DOT in, in this to, to work with us, and it is tailored to the town. So rest assured, it's gone through reviews by the different department heads, it's gone through a review by the town manager, and here we are tonight. Thank you.
Just quick.
Thank you, Council Baumgartner.
Yes, and one follow-up, also want to recognize Cindy Berry, who represented Legislite Health District, also a Groton resident, and Halzad, a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Just before our, our committee convened, we sent the referral from the council to the Planning and Zoning Commission to opine on complete streets, and they gave their seal of approval in endorsing complete streets, I think, well over a year, if not maybe a year and a half to two years ago. But, you know, in the last couple of weeks, I've been carless, have had significant brakes issues with my car, you know, just one thing, you should never let go too, too long. And I've been doing a lot more walking, you know, for personal reasons and, and political reasons too. But it is so abundantly clear that our roads are totally designed, and thoroughfares are designed for cars, and designed to induce high speeds of travel to get, you know, get people to and from places as, as fast as possible. And. And what we're learning more and more is that that was a totally wrong approach because what we're seeing, especially in Connecticut and across the country, is that pedestrian deaths are skyrocketing. You know, during the pandemic, walking increased, and so did, obviously, the associated pedestrian deaths. In 2021, pedestrian deaths were at a 40-year-high. And the crisis is disproportionately impacting our communities of color. It more than doubled. Pedestrian deaths have more than doubled since 2011. And places with the most pedestrian deaths tend to look like places like Route 1 and Route 12. In fact, here in Groton, in the last couple of years, we've had our share of pedestrian deaths on, you know, as far, you know, as far east as Mystic and as far west as Groton City. You know, our roads are designed to induce high speeds, you know, and where you see the greatest number of pedestrian deaths, they're in areas where, obviously, cars travel at significant speeds, but they have multiple lanes, and there is a lot of commercial and development activity. And there are places where pedestrians are forced to cross roads that are dangerous by design. And what this document speaks to is changing the way we think about our roads and plan our roads in a way where we are designing, based off, designing for all road users, not just motor vehicles. We're building the capacity of our local government and policymakers such as ourselves to implement equitable transportation and land use policies. And as Brian mentioned, this effort was a, you know, encompassed multiple stakeholders, community residents, and obviously, town staff convening to tackle these challenges. And so, when we think about our roads, you know, and our, you know, issues surrounding speeding and whatnot, we got to reframe the discussion. When we hear car accidents, we cannot call them accidents because they're not. There are car crashes that are resulting in pedestrian deaths. We can't ignore the street designs as a flaw as opposed to what color the pedestrian was wearing that day. You know, we, we need to name cars as the actors, you know, not as the actors, but as, you know, the drivers, as the individuals that are responsible for these issues. You know, we got to start taking accountability for ourselves when we're on the road. And so, as much as this complete streets is about planning our roads and making them safer for all users, we still need to do our part to ensure that, you know, when we are using the roads, that we're sharing the roads respectfully and politely with our pedestrians and cyclists because they will face the greatest of, you know, any accident, so to speak. And then, lastly, you know, disabled, our disabled community children and cyclists really are at greatest risk when they're using our roads. You know, we should not be fearful of allowing our kids to bike to school, of our, you know, elderly residents from walking to the store to pick up their groceries. We should have our, design our roads in a way where these things are acceptable. We have roads in communities like this in Europe. You know, I've been to Amsterdam before, and I was stunned by the fact that virtually everyone in the community can get to and from wherever they need to by transit, principally by bicycle or by walking. And we should strive to have communities such as that as well. You know, certainly, when people go to Mystic, they don't go to Mystic for great parking. Obviously not. They go there because of the streets, the fact that, you know, it's a historic coastal community with beautiful facades. And that's what we should celebrate, the streets with the activity on the streets, not, you know, not the roads, per se. So, I'll leave it at that. But I just want to thank, again, this committee was a real privilege to work with you all, you know, over four to five meetings that were all televised and, you know, put online as well. Folks are interested in kind of learning about our process. But I'm sure the council has a lot of questions. Thank you.
Councilor Portelon.
Thank you. First, I just want to say thank you so much for this opportunity to review this. I think it's a very well-written document, and I did follow and watch some of the other meetings and looked at the one, the complete streets in Portland and some of the other works. When I think of this, I also think of the Tri-Town Trail, which was amazing when I got to get to Leger for that ribbon cutting and thinking of connectability in another fashion. So, there's just a lot of work. Also, looking as we build new schools that are in certain sections of town and condensing to have less schools, folks need to consider the need for walkability because children now have to get from other sides of town, and there's not a clear-cut sidewalk to get to the middle school on all the roads to get there, depending on where you live. There might be on parts, but then other ways you have to be on the main road or on a side of embankment. And so, what I see in this document is making that accessible. Also, when we look at from a town perspective where we thought, you know, as a community and as a town council, we were moving towards being more environmentally and fiscal, you know, looking at the resiliency and sustainability mindset, this, to me, speaks to that because you're going to cut down admissions by having a community that you can walk in and bike in and feel safe for your kids to travel in. The need to drive everywhere decreases. The ABA compliance, looking at folks that, you know, the hearing, the deaf, the blind, and many other physical disabilities. I just know on hand, folks that I see walk sometimes down where I live, and they, this gentleman uses the cane to feel for the sidewalk, and that's how he knows he's in line. And the ridges at the end tell him that he's coming to a pass. Things like that, that you will not get if the sidewalk does not exist. It keeps him in line because he can't see the line. He has very low vision. And it was just actually amazingly, you know, to see how he navigated of that. Looking from the health perspective during COVID, as you know, you stated, folks could not go to the gym or didn't want to go to the gym, and so they needed to get out. Aquatic Plains Park, which is a wonderful park, got used heavily. But once it got dark, folks didn't have anywhere to go. And not everyone lives in a walkable neighborhood where they feel they can, you know, put their sneakers on, walk out their door, and hit a sidewalk, no matter the time of the night, let it be the lighting as well as the walkability. So, absolutely important. From the environmental standpoint, I think it just impacts us greatly to be thinking outside of the broader picture. Even once I moved, I live in the city, but when I moved from one part in the city to the other part, I was trying to connect from Aquatic Road and then go past the airport and, you know, things like that. And I found it very hard to navigate. I hit a sidewalk, and then it just ended. I would go this way, and I left my neighborhood, went up, and I can't think of the road or the name of the hill right there because I live here too long, off of Aquatic Road.
Rainville.
Rainville, thank you. No sidewalk. Now, that's a state road. But I think if we bring this connectability in, we can bring in the state to help us reconnect that. And I know that's in the city. So, I'm really hoping, is the city interested in looking at this complete streets? Do we know?
The city has been taking several initiatives to target specific places in the city for complete streets improvements. They've used some grant money to hire consultants that have been making recommendations. They've also been doing evaluations of their existing roads by going out and doing what are called walk audits. So, I know that there has been activity. I'm not really that informed, though, on whether there is planning for any kind of policy. I just, I just don't know that yet.
Has there been outreach to welcome them to this policy? To maybe, maybe they would consider, if this was something passed, to join in? Do we know?
Our group has not done that yet. I think that if the council agrees to move forward here, that then it opens a door for more dialogue with the neighboring municipalities, not just the city, but also Stonington, Leger.
Perfect.
You know?
So, my thought is, you know, there's been a lot of pedestrian accidents down by EB and definitely including the city, which has our, you know, the naval base, the, well, naval bases in the town. But a lot of military going to EB and Pfizer and really kind of connecting all of that because I see every day coming down Rainville because it's the shortest path down to that parking lot, people walking. When it snows, they're in the road because they can't get off to the curb. Myself, since I moved into the new neighborhood, I tried to go to the beach that way instead of going the other way down Thomas. And there was no sidewalk for me, and that's a great way for me to get up. At the end of my road, there's a button, but no sidewalk. And I was just starting to, like, as, you know, I heard this coming, I started paying attention a little bit more to what was out there and kind of leaving my house and walking. At the end of my neighborhood, the sidewalk ends, too. So, I think this is a great document, and I'm very excited to see where it goes. And I hope the other, you know, the city and the other, you know, subdivisions consider looking at this as well. I think it would be really helpful, and it might help to get the buy-in from the state. So, again, from the environmental, from the health, I was part of the HIC, Health Improvement Collaborative, and they found in non-walkable neighborhoods the obesity rates in children and things like that because they just couldn't get out and go. So, this is exciting, and I'm excited to see where it goes. And I can't thank you guys enough for doing all the hard work and the Tri-Town Trails and the biking. I mean, it really just excites me to have connectability. Thank you.
Councilor Casiri.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you all for being here. I just first wanted to acknowledge that I think this concept is great. As usual, with everything, I come at it from a law enforcement perspective. And I have seen firsthand pedestrian and bicycle accidents, and they are terrible and often avoidable if there was safer measures in the street. I'm also a parent to two young children, so this is very important to me. And I'm also a runner and have had several close calls, probably too many. But with that, I have some questions regarding language in here. So, on page 22, in the Vision section, it states, number three under Goals, it says, promote the benefits of complete streets to the public, municipal staff, commissions, so on. Who will be promoting this?
So, part of the policy recommends establishment of a standing complete streets committee. And the committee would be made up of stakeholders, including town staff, but also including local advocates and stakeholders like Legislite Health District. And these individuals, specifically those that are outside of town government, are really an essential part of a, an influential entity that can promote public understanding of the value of these kinds of improvements. And half the battle in this effort to make streets safer is educating the public. And like I said, I'm a member of the state board. And just today, our very large discussion group has been talking about these issues across the state of Connecticut and the increasing crashes. And why is it that drivers in Connecticut seem to be so oblivious to the, to the, to the, the other users on the road and that don't stop for people in crosswalks and are compared to other places that our group has visited and experienced? We seem to be way behind. And the answer to that question is, we don't educate our communities on why they should be more careful, why they should slow down. There's just a missing piece. And part of it is, public education doesn't deal with these kinds of issues. And there is actually going to be an initiative to institute a fourth-grade curriculum across the state on bicycle pedestrian use safety, sharing road, and that sort of thing, just to begin to reacquaint people with some of the lessons that their parents taught them when we were kids, when it was considered safe, safer anyways, to bike to school, walk to school, et cetera. So, education is a big part of it. And that's what groups like mine by Groton are committed to doing, is to raising the profile of these kinds of issues through public outreach and the, you know, the means that you're asking about.
Great. Thank you.
Sorry, I was just going to say, as we go through the Community Connectivity Plan, which this, the council approved, there's a huge education component to that plan. And so, this will be a perfect opportunity as they're reaching out to the community saying, you know, what are your concerns? That will be a perfect opportunity to share. Hopefully, this council will approve, and we can share with the community that we now have this policy, and this is why it was designed. So, that, that whole project will probably be starting next spring.
Great. Thank you. So, on page 23, in the Principal section under number two, All Projects and Phases, it states, all transportation projects shall consider complete streets improvements. And then I'm skipping down to all road sidewalk capital improvement projects, CIP, whether funded by capital projects, grants, or other revenue sources, shall conform to the policy. So, my question is, if we have a grant for a sidewalk and something isn't covered under the grant, will we be required by this policy to fund whatever is not funded by the grant?
I'm not sure I'm following you on that one.
So, I'm thinking of, like, with this policy, we could maybe look into, let's say we have a grant for a sidewalk. And with this policy, it says we should look into putting in a bike lane when we're doing something or any kind of complete street addition. So, if it wasn't funded under the grant, would we be required through this complete streets policy to pay for that out of the town budget?
No. There is an exceptions section, section six, that, and one of the things is, I believe it talks about costs.
Okay.
So that if, you know, there's something that is going to cost way more than the grant is, there can be some exceptions to the policy.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we are not
You're not locked into
Completely bound. Okay.
Yes, to what's in this policy.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you. And I also wanted to highlight that there is a section in this, on page 25, that the Groton School District encourages students to walk to school and has established standards that stipulate the distance a student can be expected to walk. If sidewalks and safe crossings are provided, the town shall coordinate when opportunities arise for complete streets improvements to provide safe routes to schools. The Board of Ed policy is that if you live within a mile from the schools, that you have to walk to school or be driven. And my children attend Northeast Academy, and there are no sidewalks in the neighborhood because a mile within the school is in Fieldcrest, basically. And there's really no sidewalks in the neighborhood besides Oslo Street. So, I just wanted to highlight that and bring attention to it. And I think it's really important that it's in here because we do have schools in Groton that have this Board of Ed policy, yet our streets aren't really safe for that policy. And then I have a question for page 27. It states, under Policy Implementation and Performance Measurement, it states, in the author's note, Author's Note, "An up-to-date measurement and reporting of complete streets improvement should be considered." And my question was, who will measure that? Will it be the group that's formed or would it be up to town staff? And if it is up to town staff, do we have enough town staff and the time to do so?
Yeah, the reporting requirements is really town staff and a lot of it falls on me.
Okay.
There's a whole list of things following that we'd be looking to report on annually. A lot of these items, we actually currently do track now, so it's not, I was worried too when I started reading through this, there were some other things in here that I did have removed because it was becoming a burden to our staff. But most of these things is fairly easy to track, so we can report on those.
Okay, great. And my last question is from page 28, under the Complete Streets Advisory Group Committee. And in number one, it states, "Provide input on public projects to further the town of Groton Complete Streets policy and make recommendations on transportation projects." I wanted to know that if we implement this policy, does now the complete streets policy become a next step in any development process?
I can answer that. Yeah, we will look at this policy whenever we review any kind of development application that comes before us.
Okay. Is that something that's already kind of being looked at when we meet with developers or will this be added, I don't want to say burden, but is this something extra that's now added onto our economic development process?
No, no. We can easily incorporate that into any review process that we have for site plan applications and for subdivision applications.
Okay. Thank you so much for your answer. And thank you.
Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, gentlemen, for all the incredible work that you've done on this. As somebody who walks extensively in this town, I'm well aware of pretty much every single street because I've walked on every single street. So, and I continue to do that all the time. I have a question on, in the Principles section in the design, they have the standards and guidelines that your, that the streets policy will follow. How close are we with our own zoning and town rules on highways to this policy? I mean, how much work do we have to do to sort of change what we have or do we have to change what we have? Like, do we have to rewrite some of the zoning rules?
Well, I think I should defer to Deb, but I believe that zoning only applies to property and that the rights of ways are really outside of zoning and that this would not change any town regulations. And I'll let Deb comment on that also.
Yeah, that is right to some extent, Brian. With the site plan process, we can require some improvements to the right-of-way. We will also be able to require improvements through the subdivision process when there's new streets.
Are you gonna need to rewrite some of the zoning rules that apply to those sections or can you just sort of tell them to do certain things? I mean, just wondering, what's the burden of work? How much work do you have to do to sort of get the town in line with all the standards that you're now gonna use if we implement this?
Yeah, a lot of these standards are like the ASHTO standards. We have Town of Groton Road and Drainage Standards, which is our own local standards, which is really falls into the subdivision regulations that Deb was just speaking of. And those do follow pretty closely the ASHTO standards, which is a national standard. So, there's really not a lot of extra burden on developers.
Yeah, my question kind of piggybacks on Counselor Casiri's question of how much, if there's any real burden that you have to do to sort of implement this and kind of move forward with it.
No, I don't see any.
Okay. And are the, these standards are national standards? Does Connecticut have its own set of standards or do they follow the national-
Yeah, Connecticut has their own too. Yeah.
And because most of the main roads in Groton are owned by the state?
Yeah, the design follows the federal guidelines, but they'll have their own, like, construction standards and details and stuff that they adopted themselves.
So, because the community like Groton accepts this standards, as they start to do work, like, we see them around refixing street stoplights and intersections that they've been doing for the last couple of years, do they sort of adjust themselves to go, "Oh, Groton's a complete streets town, so we need to sort of use those rules as opposed to something else?"
From what I understand in interactions with DOT, many complete streets improvements are optional. So, they're not what has been done when roads are reconstructed or new roads are built routinely. They are done when a community requests these kinds of enhancements or they are done when the department is made aware of particular issues or there are significant crashes at a location. That's when these kinds of changes are typically looked at. But when a community, such as Groton in this case, is letting the department know that it is committed to making streets more equitable and adding enhancements like better crossing facilities, there's a host of specific improvements without going into the details. That, there's like a menu that can be selected for different locations, like intersections or mid-block crossings or whether a bike, a four-lane street can be changed to two lanes with a center turn lane and bike lanes on each side, those sorts of things, road diets. Those sorts of things are on the table for evaluation. But typically, the department doesn't really open that menu up unless they know that their community, the host community where that road exists, is on board with them. Otherwise, they're, you know, they're spending a lot of staff time and resources that could end up being, you know, wasted.
So, the community like Groton will drive, sort of drive the bus in saying, "We want to do a more enhanced road or a better road or do different things."
That's right.
Whereas otherwise, they might just give you the, you know, option one and we might want options two, three, or four-
That's right.
-that would go on that.
That's right.
So, that's, so we drive the bus, we figure out what we want under this set of policies and guidelines.
Well, we, the town would perhaps request what we want, but we don't, you can't really tell the department what to do. You can make suggestions.
Right. But you've kind of-
And not, it's not gonna, they're not gonna agree with you every time, but they, they'll be more, they'll listen to you, I think, more than they would otherwise.
And I would support Counselor Bordelons, more sidewalks. We definitely need more sidewalks, so that's, the more that we can do with that is certainly the better. So, great. Okay, thank you.
Counselor McBride?
Thank you. Excuse me. Terrific policy. Thank you for providing us. Appreciate the focus on public safety as a top priority. I just had a question. We went through a bridge situation a couple of weeks ago and I had a concern over the lack of, I don't know what you want to call it, partitioning or whatever, on the bridge because children are jumping off the bridge and there wasn't anything mentioned. This policy doesn't include bridges and I'm wondering, should we have any mention of bridges because that connects, you know, connects the road? So, I'm just wondering, just for consideration, if you could look into that, if it's worthy of anything? Bridges or overpasses or anything like that?
Well, I think by implication, it does include bridges because it refers to the rights of way and bridges are within rights of way. So, really, it is implicitly included in this policy. Any kind of bridge condition where bicycles or pedestrians or bus shelters, transit, any of those kinds of activities that it could, that do or could occur on a bridge or under a bridge would be, I think, considered here. But I do want to make a point, since you bring this up, that not all roads in the community are eligible for every kind of complete streets improvement. You know, there are some streets that just can't accommodate everybody. And so, part of this process is to pair a policy like this with an overall plan, which is what the Parks and Rec Department is about to initiate, is an overall plan of the whole town. And that plan will prioritize certain corridors for more intensive complete street development because those are the corridors where people need to be able to go from where perhaps they live, like a neighborhood, to where they work or to where they shop. And, you know, and trails may actually allow some of those connections so that people aren't having to walk along some of these roads or bike along some of these roads. Because in New England especially, the right-of-ways are notoriously irregular and in some cases so narrow that you only have room for two lanes and maybe a sidewalk on one side. And so, knowing that, I think, helps you give this a measured understanding that it's we're not, it's not requiring the town to put sidewalks and bike lanes on every road. It's saying, where it's appropriate, do the best possible for everyone. But it's, you're not gonna be able to accommodate everyone on every road.
Thank you. Just a couple of other questions. Do you utilize speed bumps at all? Because in here on Goals, under two mentions, crosswalk, repainting, lighting sidewalk, you know, I'm just wondering if that should include speed bumps because I know in my past, we used speed bumps as a method of slowing down traffic and-
I think that we're avoiding too much specificity when it comes to facilities because the standards for complete streets and for roadway requirements are constantly evolving and changing. And speed bumps aren't necessarily uniformly applicable. So, really, the idea is to leave the options as wide and as flexible as possible. And that's where ASHTO comes in. That's where the MUTCD, which is another federal document that's used to design roads, comes in. And if speed bumps are applicable in a certain place, then certainly they would be considered. And, I mean, I've seen recently, speed bumps put in on certain streets around the area. And so, I think it's a very site-specific sort of improvement or change.
So, you don't think it needs to be included?
I don't think it needs to be called out.
Two last comments. One thing, I think, if we can add some additional detail, or my recommendation would be to add some additional detail on cost information. Because we mentioned, you know, on page 27, to facilitate the regular evaluation, Director of Public Works shall provide a written report to the council, but it doesn't talk about any cost information. And then, on number 14, it talks about the total dollar amount spent on complete streets improvements. I'm just wondering if there should be some consideration for how that total dollar amount for projects includes information on cost? Because although this is a terrific policy, we want to move forward and put more sidewalks in. I think the recommend, or will it be done? The recommendation when it comes to the council to do a road or whatever, will there be breakdowns between the pedestrian bikeways and the sidewalks and all that? Because although we want to do that, I think all that cost information has to be provided in order to make an informed decision. So, is that also inherent, that that would be provided even though it's not listed in this policy?
As we go through a project, yeah. So, we would have that broken out.
Okay, great.
And the Community Connectivity Plan, I think, as Brian referred to, you know, part of the scope of work is to prioritize, identify, and come up with a long-term capital plan for all of those projects that have been identified. So, that would provide you with the-
The different details.
-with the costs of, you know, of specific projects.
Okay. But broken down by sidewalk or additional footage or whatever it may be. I mean, sometimes you want to put a road that's 46 feet in, but do you need to do, I'm just making up numbers because I'm not expert at this, but, you know, the numbers will come to the council to say, "Could it be 45 feet or could it be 55 feet?" Because there's gonna be a cost differential between those two. So, is that part of, is that part of when you guys present the project plans for various roads or improvements?
I can't, you know, for the Community Connectivity Plan, you know, they would provide a budget number to connect, you know, A to C. I'm not sure that in the scope of the work of the RFP, you know, it would, we would want to break out, it's gonna cost, you know, $45 a square foot versus, you know, another figure.
Okay.
But I think when Public Works is doing their specific projects, that might be part of that.
Yeah, it's all part of the evaluation.
Yeah.
It's gonna go through different options.
I guess I'm just saying, it would be nice to break out the different components so the council can make a decision on whether that sidewalk, although we want a sidewalk, you know, it sounds like everybody wants a sidewalk, but if the sidewalk's gonna cost an additional $2 million, the council needs that information to know it's not all embedded in the one RFP number.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. The last comment, under five, jurisdiction. You mentioned in, under four, you mentioned the private-owned streets of Groton, Groton and Morford Clover not, shall not be included, but I believe it also needs to be mentioned in the jurisdiction area where you say owners of private roads and those owned by political subdivisions within the town. This policy doesn't apply to the City of Groton. I think we need to also state Groton Long Point there as well. You do state it later, but it's not stated in the jurisdiction section, number five.
I believe the statement that those owned by political subdivisions is a reference to, am I right, Groton Long Point?
Well, I'm just saying, you state, you just mentioned City of Groton, not Groton Long Point, but in the latter part, you mentioned both. It just seems a little inconsistent. Not material, but just thought I'd point it out.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you for your answers.
Thank you, Counselor Franco.
Thank you. So, I read through this and I have numerous questions. So, I would, I'm gonna just guess, and this is something that I just recently had noticed over the past couple of years, when numerous people are walking on the streets. In my own neighborhood, I have lots of walkers and they walk their dogs and they just walk. People walk every single day a lot in my neighborhood. But what I'm noticing is about 40% of them walk in the road and they have a sidewalk, but they don't utilize it. And I'm wondering, is there a way to actually get people to utilize a sidewalk instead of actually walking in the road?
It's typically by making the sidewalk just more comfortable, which often means make it wider, smoother, shade it with street trees. If you, if it's more pleasant to walk in the street, then that means that your sidewalks are substandard. And typically, what I see is that the sidewalks just aren't wide enough, especially when there's two people walking side by side and say they have a dog and/or they're pushing baby in a carriage, the sidewalk just seems too narrow. And often vegetation is infringing on the sidewalk space and you just feel more, it's just more spacious to be on the street. And if you're in a neighborhood where the speed limit is 25 miles per hour and there's lower traffic volume, then sure. I mean, that's like, that just characterizes my neighborhood, which has no sidewalks to begin with and everybody's walking in the street. But traffic is slow and it's not at high volume. As soon as you step out into a street with 45 mile an hour, 50 mile an hour vehicles and the same width as the street of your neighborhood, people are not walking in that street unless they have to.
Okay. Can you tell me what the difference between a bike path versus a sidewalk? I know that there's bike paths on the road, but I've also, like, I went to Nantucket one time and they have these very wide paths and it's for pedestrians and for bikes and to keep them off the road. And they run on these big paths. And I don't, that's what I'm curious, is that a sidewalk? Is it a bike path? I'm not sure exactly, like, what the difference is and can you explain a little bit about that?
Sure. So, sidewalks are really oriented towards walkers. And they aren't typically more than five or six feet wide. And they interact with intersections, with crosswalks and curb ramps and they, so they're broken up. They cross over driveways. They're really for, intended for slow-moving people on foot who can, you know, navigate and can stop and wait to cross. What you saw in Nantucket, I would compare to the path along Route 1, near the Quant Plains Park, across the street from it. So, it's like a 10-foot-wide asphalt path.
Yes.
It doesn't cross very many intersections or driveways. And you see a lot of kids and adults on bicycles and walking two, three, four people abreast. That is a side path, that's referred to as a side path, that's running parallel to a road. And then, we have what are considered full multi-use pathways, which many of you have experienced, you in Nantucket, some of the rail trails. The Farmington Canal Trail is the best-known one in Connecticut. There are several in Rhode Island. There are also brand-new pathways that are built from scratch. I mentioned New Britain. New Britain's receiving millions of dollars of grant funds based on their successful implementation of other projects. They're now connecting parts of town by paths to get around some of the bottlenecks where they can't get continuous bike and head facilities along the streets. So, like I said, not every street is eligible. But with a robust program, a good plan like what Parks and Rec will be doing in the coming months, then you can identify corridors where you could actually have a great path that might get you from a neighborhood to a place of employment or commercial activity. And it's not just through parkland, it's also along perhaps sewer-lined easements and right-of-ways and that sort of thing. There are creative ways to build what you're talking about without being right alongside a road.
All right. Thank you. So, on, it's my page 22 in the old packet. It has goals. And then, it says, "Establish a standing Complete Street Advisory Group Committee composed of community stakeholders with municipal staff support." So, this one, I probably have a bunch of questions. First off is, we have a traffic authority. Why would we not be using them?
Well, the traffic authority is the chief of police and the town manager. That's the legal traffic authority. They do all the signs, no parking, that type of thing. So, they will be part of this committee. They'll certainly be, they wouldn't be the only people on this committee, but they would be part of it.
Okay. And it's not, I didn't see it, forgive me if I missed it, but I didn't see where, who would appoint the members? would appoint the members? Would it be the town council, the mayor, or the town manager? What their terms would be and who specifically would be appointed? Would be like one town counselor, one RTM member, things of that nature? So that's not clearly spelt out in there. And then it's mentioned here about dealing with the Connecticut Department of Transportation. And when we had Connecticut Senator Heather Sommers here at our council meeting, and we had discussed, like, it was, I had brought up potentially putting sidewalks across, like, on state roads. And she said she has also questioned this with the state, and that's not something that they really do that often, or, and as I can recall, because there, we were trying to think of better ways for like our downtown Groton area for mobility and the issues that I know, I think planning might have even had a survey done with people walking the streets and the things that they've talked about in our community of what they were looking for. But she said it's very difficult to get the state to do that type of thing. But then I read in here, and I hear what you're saying, but from that survey, I recall there was like, there was a lot of missing crosswalks and the sidewalks and things of that nature, or how bad they are. And it, will they really help with us if we have a complete street project? Because she said it's very difficult. She, many towns have been asking her about this.
Yeah, I can comment. There is a state statute, this is the town is responsible for all the maintenance of sidewalks and state right-ofways. So they graciously gave us all the sidewalks. So we are required to install new sidewalks. We do have, you know, for the last couple of years, I put in CIP money, which we've gotten approved, thank you, for sidewalks on like Route 1, which we're designing right now, to put in. I mean, if a state has a project where they're going to come in and redo an intersection, then they will incorporate the complete streets, you know, put in the new ramps, like all the signals that they're doing on 184, Route 1. They are putting in all-new ADA handicap ramps and, you know, crossing crosswalks and that type of thing. DOT typically will not come in to a town and just do a sidewalk project.
Okay.
Even though they do buy into the complete streets, they still, their main focus, I hate to say, is still vehicles, you know, safe, you know, streets, rotary construction.
Okay. When I was campaigning, I had heard from many people in the biking community when I was knocking doors, and there is a very large biking community in Groton. And so what concerns me is also the safety issues. So as I've been told, if we widen roads, people usually tend to drive faster on them. But then we need to, we should have bike paths for people to be able to bike safely, because I do drive around and I look at like the narrow on the breakdown lane and how sometimes how narrow they are, and that people that ride a bike, it's so dangerous. And actually, on my way here tonight, I don't know if everybody knows, but the, like Bel Air between the high school and the Bel Air neighborhood, it's very dangerous walking on the side of the road there. And there was somebody ri-- like, walking on the side as I was coming up around the turn, and he scared me that he was standing there, walking on the side. And I'm like, my gosh, we definitely need some kind of path for somebody to get from like the Bel Air neighborhood at least up to the high school where they can hit the sidewalks up there, because it's very dangerous on that corner. And I've seen many people riding bikes, like mopeds or walking, and I, and it's, and so my question is, is there something we can do to either widen the road and then put bike paths in? And like, and it has been mentioned before, like some kind of reflectives, like on the ground, like I know I've been in Florida where they actually have something that sticks up out of the ground every so many feet or something. So when you're driving, it's very reflective, and it shows you the difference between that and the side, you know, where the bike lane might be or the breakdown lane. And so you could stay on your path and not get into their path. Is there any way to keep the bikers safer in these lanes, other than what we discussed earlier, is having these separate paths?
Yeah. It all depends.
Maybe through the merit property up there, if we could put a path of some sort, or, I don't know.
Right. It's so site-specific that it's hard to say one method is better than another, especially in a situation like what you've described, which is most likely a narrow right-ofway and wetlands and other kinds of constraints. And that's, when a roadway just isn't eligible for something like a bike lane, because it just can't be widened, that's when the search for alternative routes becomes more important. That's when you're looking for off-road pathways or other routes, other roads that connect to your destination. Because there are just some bottlenecks or barriers, is a better way to put it, that are just insurmountable.
Is my time up? All right, I'll come back around.
Quick point of information. What Council Franco described, the complete streets policy would inform what type of improvements would be made to that road, or, you know, it's a state road in that case, but, you know.
Well, not specific, the policy doesn't specifically address locations. It addresses procedures and addresses process and addresses, you know, preferences and all sorts of other, you know, operating procedures and that sorts of thing with the town. The kind of plan that Mr. Berry describes is the guideline for specifically where improvements like bike lanes are most eligible. And that plan will most likely prioritize where in the community these sorts of things can be done most cost-effectively and with the most impact. So eventually, once that plan is committed, you will be able to look at the recommendations, and surely there will be recommendations on how to get from Bel Air and the other neighborhoods going closer to Mystic through the Route 1 corridor to the high school, to the middle school, to the commercial district on Route 1. I mean, that is such an important linkage that it's going to be addressed one way or another, and it just has to be. The previous bicycle pedestrian and trail master plan also looked at that and made some recommendations that are still, I think, in some ways viable. So it's not the first time it's been considered.
Okay. My time is up, so I'll come around again.
Council Borlon?
Yeah, thank you. So yeah, I can agree with Council Franco regarding the reflection. I know the raised things I had brought up a while back at some other forum, not at a council meeting, but the thing that they've talked about with the raised is the plowing could catch them. But I have seen up north, like in Maine and New Hampshire, where they have like a little bit of a, it's kind of set deeper, and then they have the reflection and more reflective paint, which would be nice to see on some of our darker streets, especially the little choke point that, you know, Council Franco spoke about. You know, growing up in Mystic on the Groton side and, you know, always wanting to kind of walk that Route 1 and not really having a safe place. The connectability there would be amazing, to be able to really safely walk that whole strip. So that's definitely a concern, or, I mean, maybe even a small, little, I saw a town where they put a little small wooden bridge where they couldn't widen where the waterway was, but they were able to like widen the road, but then you hopped up on this little bridge around the little, and it worked out nicely to kind of widen it naturally by having a little overhang. The other roads I think about too, as a child, is Fieldcrest, as Council Cassiri brought up. You, we would leave, want to leave like Fieldcrest after going to a friend's house, and then you'd get to Cal Hill. A nightmare. I mean, it is absolutely not wide. There's no walkability, but it's a major artery out of Fieldcrest if you want to go anywhere. And as a young teenager, you do want to get out of Fieldcrest and go elsewhere. So we found ourselves going out the back end and around, but that might be a road that can't be widened based on the hills and the rock ledge. But that's definitely a road that is another major connectability that kind of can connect into old Mystic and come around. So I just think of those roads, Groton, you know, the Noank-Ledger Road, the 184 corridor, the Route 117 sections, and the list just keeps going. Buddington Road, once again, great areas, but limited walkability, not, even where the areas where sidewalks couldn't be, but there might be some other constructive ways to widen those. One of the things I do want to say that I see used every morning on my way to work is the path along the naval base. And that is like a sidewalk, but it's kind of a bikeway, and it's amazing with the two lanes that turn into the Navy Base, seeing the amount of people using that space is huge. And, you know, it's a great idea because it kind of works as a multi-function. Is that something that other sections of town might be able to adopt in this plan?
Certainly. I think, I think the preferred mode for bicycles is to be separated from vehicles. And really, the current guidance is wherever possible, provide what are known as protected bike lanes. So these are, these are bike lanes that have some sort of a barrier between the bicycle traffic and the vehicular traffic. Because a line on the pavement won't stop a vehicle from crossing over and hitting somebody, and that happens routinely. It also won't stop a vehicle from parking in the bike lane. And when that happens, then you're forced to ride out into the traffic lane if you're coming through on a bike. So the bike lanes that most of us think of really are not the state-of-the-art at all, and they're not necessarily the safest facilities either. So really, the profession, the design profession, planning profession that deals with these sorts of things is looking for routes that are more like the path to the Navy Base, the Crystal Road path, and other kinds of paths, like the one along Route 1, or completely off-road alternative routes, perhaps through parkland, or perhaps through utility corridors, you know, just alongside railroad right-ofways. There is a, there is a path along a railroad in Groton, it's between Haley Farm and Bluff Point. It's just in rough condition because it really hasn't been addressed by anyone. So there are routes in our town that could do what you're hoping without necessarily, you know, widening existing roads or having to wait for DOT to finally agree that maybe this is something they would consider doing.
And my last road was Military Highway, which is another beautiful road with a great scenery. It reminds me a lot of Nyonic with their little coastal access with the railroad, and they have the boardwalk. And that part of Military Road has some, you know, sprawl of houses, and then there's some big gaps where it's open, and, you know, to be able to--
Soon-to-be submarine Capitol Avenue.
Yeah. To be able to have some ability to kind of navigate that road a little easier on Military Highway would be a wonderful asset. And then where Council Franco was talking about that chokehold on Route 1, even a sidewalk to go over to that trail and a sign, you know, that says pedestrian crossing, even if when you can't widen it, just adding some signage and a crosswalk where people can come out of that neighborhood comfortably, and maybe even a button or a light to slow people down so that people could access trails and stuff. So anyway, there's a million things, so I'm excited to see what could come from this and what the collaboration could look like. But, you know, as we sit here and think, I think Military, you know, Road, you know, Ledger, Noank, Route 1, 184, Cal Hill Road, and even in the town of Groton, Rain, you know, that Rainville and, you know, the connectability throughout, it's huge, and it can make a huge difference. So thank you guys so much for all the work you guys have done, really.
Council Franco?
Thank you. So it was mentioned with planning and zoning in here, and that, so this would, so complete streets would have to be considered with any type of new development or neighborhoods, and as this is a policy, but it's not an ordinance. Is that correct? So it doesn't--
It's just, it's a consideration, is what we're saying. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And then, so repaving of a neighborhood would not, that would, it's not working?
Oh. So the repaving of a neighborhood would not be considered, that would be considered maintenance, is that correct? Or would that be considered new?
That would be just maintenance.
Okay. And then, implementation of this, would the town council be voting on every new change? Or would that just be something that was worked in and we're approving the budget and you're going to apply it? In Public Works?
Yeah. It would be, you know, worked into the project, part of the budget.
Okay. So if you said we're going to do a certain street, and you may work it into a, your, let's just say it is a road that it's been noticed that we should do something, and you're going to add it in, you're going to break out the difference in pricing, and we're going to just approve the budget, probably a budget season, is that when it's going to probably happen?
It is.
Or will it come to us in this kind of forum where we have to individually vote on the project?
Yeah, I think we envision this as part of like the CIP, you know, going through that process, through the budget process.
Okay.
Describing the different components.
Okay. And then, so it mentioned in here with planning and zoning, and can, if we pass this policy, can the council actually tell planning and zoning to abide by this program?
Just like me answer that. So when we review plans, we review all kinds of policies and documents and plans that have been associated with that particular project, and we require developers to adhere to those. So with this policy, we would look to the policy, tell the developer is what you need to do in order to build this new street or to do this improvement. And the Planning and Zoning Commission would require that.
So we can tell planning and zoning to implement this?
So again, if you adopt this policy, this is something that staff planners would recommend to the Planning and Zoning Commission. They are really in favor of a complete streets policy and developing complete streets. And at some point, I would imagine, we would have, you know, we would have some kind of priority plan in place to show where we are going to develop these, these complete streets. You know, they're probably more appropriate for more developed areas of town rather than rural areas of town. And I think that would be the way to implement it through the Planning and Zoning Commission. At some point, I think we will revise our subdivision regulations to incorporate these policies into the street regulations, and I would think that road and drainage standards at some point would be revised to incorporate this.
All right. So I'm just going to try and rephrase this a little differently. Planning and zoning commission can choose to adopt this policy if they choose to do so. Is that what you're saying? Or are you saying the council, if we pass this policy, we are telling the planning and zoning to implement this as well? Or are they choosing to adopt it?
No. So you would adopt it, and that would be a recommendation of staff to the Planning and Zoning Commission to incorporate those types of improvements into whatever development they're reviewing.
Okay.
And at some point, those, those recommendations would be incorporated into their regulations, so they would have to follow those recommendations.
Okay. So we could pass this policy, you would go then make a recommendation to planning and zoning, and they would adopt it into their policy? Is that what you're saying?
It is what I'm saying. And again--
They can choose to.
The Planning and Zoning Commission is really interested in incorporating complete streets policy--
I understand--
--in every single development.
I understand that, and that's not, that's not my thought processes on this. My thought process is if we do something, and we're, and sort of how I read this is, it's saying that planning and zoning will do certain things, but my question being is, can we as the council tell them to do these things? I don't know if we have that authority to do so. So they might be very much in favor, but this may be something that they're going to have to review and choose to adopt on their own, not something that because we pass a policy, we're automatically putting planning and zoning into the play. That's my question. You see where I'm coming from? And I don't know, as a council, if we can--
That's correct.
Okay.
No, that's correct. You are not going to direct them to implement something that is not in their regulations.
Thank you. Thank you. And I, also, I'm very in favor of the grant applications, and I know when we talked about sustainability with that committee, resiliency, they talked about how, you know, the enormous amount of grants the town could get if we had somebody applying for them. So who would be applying for the grants exactly?
It could be a number of departments. Recreation Trails grants would probably be through Parks and Recreation. We did, we also have applied for grants through Connecticut Department of Transportation. So it could be Parks and Recreation, it could be Public Works, and a collaborative effort also.
And considering other towns that you've seen, do they get substantial amounts of grants? I mean, what kind of, what are we looking at here?
Well, we, in 2021, got a $344,000 grant to connect the bike path from the existing bike path on Route 1 through Sutton Park out to Midway Oval. And we were recently notified, and it hasn't come to the council yet, that the federal government has put more money into, I think it was the TAP program in Connecticut. And when we, when the town of Groton applied for that project, for that grant, two years ago, we came in second, and they've put money back into that same application, into that same grant. And because the town was second, and the money originally went to Norwich, we're now first, and there's $1.4 million available to the town. So that's the kind of money we're, that I can speak to, you know, in my experience. And I'm sure there's, Greg may have figures for other grants that the town has received for transportation.
Right. I'm just wondering, with the complete streets and the grants that you can get, because you're a complete street town, like, is there anything, any kind of numbers that you could say, look at this town, they brought in like an extra $3 million because they became a complete street town, and this is, and they did these great things? And so just to say, you know, maybe envisioning in the couple of, you know, the foreseeable future, we may be able to do some great things with the amount of grants that we get, and that's, I'm just curious of those things, instead of waiting for new development.
We will be able to do great things with the grants we will get. And there are examples of this, that, my favorite is New Britain, which in the past 10 years has received over $40 million in grants specifically for complete streets.
That's what I'm looking for.
And I'm friends with their public works director, and I've worked with him, and so I get all the backstory on what's been going on there. And they just completed a fantastic complete streets master plan. So I encourage everyone to go to the New Britain town website and look at this document to give you an idea of what's possible. And one thing that's really important about this is, the public works director in New Britain tells everyone that he talks to about this, is, you know, we've received all this money, we've received millions of dollars, we've built this amazing bridge over the expressway, the Beehive Bridge, we've put in all of these things, reconstructed intersections, sidewalks, all these things. He said, "But the small improvements that we've made around the city, that we've spent less than half a million dollars on, have actually had the largest impact, because our complete streets policies filter down to the small projects. And those are the ones that affect the local residents the most, because those complete the gaps in the sidewalks so that they can walk to the neighborhood pharmacy. And they do things for everyday people, for the senior residents, for the kids that can get to school. Those small, just those small targeted improvements." And that's what a complete streets policy, I think, does best, is it keeps it in front of everybody, so that when an opportunity arises, they're going, yeah, this is why we're doing it, to make these changes. The big projects are great, but they are fewer and farther between than the small incremental improvements.
Right. Just, you know, as somebody who works in accounting and finance, I think the funding for this is important to me. And if we could potentially bring in those type of dollars into our community as well to help achieve this program, I would be absolutely in favor of it. So thank you very much. Finished all my questions.
I just had a point of information. So in a lot of ways, my question, I guess, is, this is more like a mindset with like supporting a policy, just like we adopt the resilience and sustainability. Doesn't mean we're going to go rip and, you know, without the money and the funding until the CIPs, there'll be grants, but this would be just a mindset, so that when something new is being built, we're already moving towards this, this model? Is that correct?
That's a large part of it.
Okay.
It's like institutional transformation. That's the kinds of words that we use.
So even if like there was no grants, it would, it's again, the mindset as new things are being built?
Right.
Right.
Okay. Thank you. I'm seeing no other hands. So I'll call for a vote on recommending adoptions of a complete streets policy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who made the motion?
I did.
In second? I'm sorry.
Counselor Borlon. Abstentions? Carries unanimously eight in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. And just to note that Counselor Parker left at 9:50. So that carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's past 10 o'clock. Well passed. So I'll ask, it's past 11 o'clock. So I'll ask consensus from the council to continue.
I'm in favor, continuing.
Okay. I see two.
I'm in favor.
Three. Okay. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Westerville. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Jones. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So here we go. Five in favor, three opposed. Borlon, Cassiri, Franco, no abstaining. We returned at 11:12.[1740.51]